Mr. Mayor, we have no reportable items this evening.
[inaudible] Ready to begin?
[inaudible] I pledge the flag of the United States of America, and consider it a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Pastor [inaudible].
Thank you. Would you pray with me, please? God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and convention. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with love and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your family, confident in your goodness and love. In his name, amen. Thank you.
Moving on to presentations and proclamations. Our first presentation this evening will be Business of the Month, which is Dana Point Auto Services. Ms. Johnson, will you please provide your slideshow?
Good evening, Mayor Tomlinson and members of the council. I am pleased to announce the Business of the Month for July 2016, Dana Point Auto Service. Tonight, we are joined by the shop owner, Richard Deffenbaugh, and his family. Richard always has lived by the saying, "Give me something and I will make it work." This phrase came into play many times throughout his life, especially in high school when he had to move with his family from Oklahoma to California where his stepfather had gotten a job in the oil industry. Once he finished high school, he went on to Fullerton Junior College where he became the captain of his wrestling team and an All-American. After he finished junior college, his stepfather had informed him of a small gas station that needed help down in Dana Point. Because of this, Richard went on to dealer school to get the licensing he needed to run a gas station. And once he was done, they gave him a loan to buy that little station that he would pay back for half a cent per gallon. Richard took over the Richfield Gas Station in June of 1969, not taking a single day off for seven months. In 1986, Richard grew into a bigger facility to do repairs and landed in their current location at 34342B Pacific Coast Highway. Richard believes that running his shop is very much like coaching a sports team. You need to have the best people in the right spaces to be successful. Being able to service everything from small checks to air conditioners to brakes, Dana Point Auto Service will help you with almost all of your car needs. They believe that if you treat your customers right, then you will be a success as well. Dana Point Auto Service guarantees the quality of their work and the service they provide will be the best you will find. This has been shown through their five Golden Lantern Awards from the Dana Point Times that they have received for best car repair service in Dana Point. Being part of the Dana Point community is important to Richard. Throughout the years, he has been involved with almost every local organization. Joining the Dana Point Chamber in 1971, he's been on the Board of Directors, the Chair of the Chamber Scholarship Committee, as well as Ambassador of the Year and Business of the Year. He continues to support Dana Hills High School football and has given generously to the Hobie Memorial Foundation. It should come as no surprise that Richard used to sell gas at his gas station to Hobie Alter, along with many other surfers. On behalf of the City Council, we would like to congratulate you for being selected as Business of the Month for July 2016. We wish you many more years of continued success.
If you come up to the podium in the center, we'd like to give you a presentation.
Dana Point Auto Featured Business of the Month, July 2016. City of Dana Point takes great pleasure in presenting Dana Point Auto located at 34342 Pacific Coast Highway, Unit B, in Dana Point, and extends our congratulations on being named Dana Point Featured Business of the Month. By myself and on behalf of the entire City Council, please accept this certificate of recognition.
I want to thank the city of Dana Point, but first of all, I'd like to thank my wife, who's been with me forty-seven years, been through all the struggles. My manager, Steve Wyman, has been with me fourteen years. He's the nuts and bolts of the operation. Granddaughter, all the way from Louisville, Kentucky. Good to see your paw. Well, Dana Point is my city, and there's another gentleman sitting back there that you probably hear from, Doug Greek. We've been around this area a long time. I started in 1969, there was nothing here. And now it's grown, and it's growing the right way. I'm very proud of my city, and I call it my city because I've been here so long. I want to thank you all very much, and I'll continue to support Dana Point as much as I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Hold on, we have another presentation. I see Heather Johnson is not here, but we have Gary Marcadis from the Chamber of Commerce.
Richard, on behalf of the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce, its members in the Board of Directors, we congratulate you, Jody, and all of your staff on your nomination as Business of the Month. Of course, this comes as no surprise for us that know Richard as his can-do attitude, his willingness to step up to the challenge. Richard, as you heard, has been a member of the chamber since 1971. He also chairs our Education Committee and is tasked with and successfully raises $5,000 every year for the Dana Hills Scholarship Fund, so congratulations for that. He currently serves as an ambassador, a board member for four years, and an all-around great guy, and we're lucky to have him as a member and a part of our city as well. Congratulations.
Okay, we'd like to bring up your family and have a few photos with them. Donna. Ursula's going to come in and say a few words, so Ursula, I'll hand the mic over to you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mayor Tomlinson and members of the City Council, for honoring Donna as Employee of the Month. I had the pleasure of sitting on Donna's interview panel, and she was by far the superior candidate. We had very high expectations for her, and she blew all those expectations away. She came with a very long and loyal career with the city of San Juan Capistrano, and she brought a lot of that skill set over to the city of Dana Point. Her customer service, her true care for the customers is very evident in the way she interacts with them, and I personally was very impressed. I like to sit down with new employees at about the six-month mark to see if they have any recommendations or previous experience from other places that they'd like to share. And Donna, I was very impressed with her desire to want to learn and to be able to contribute, and she gave some really good ideas and suggestions. So, thank you so much, Donna, for the service that you provide. She's also been able to promote within her tenure here with the city of Dana Point, and that's all based on her performance, and it's a pleasure to work with you, and we are very appreciative of you being here. Thank you.
Okay, there's a nice certificate of recognition here, and I'll read a few of the things off it. Whereas, Donna began working for the city of Dana Point on June 15, 2015, as a secretary cashier and was promoted to permit technician on May 2, 2016, in the Building and Safety Division of the Community Development Department. Donna embraces the need to assist our customers through the development process and always provides five-star customer service. Thank you. Donna works consistently, reflects high standards, and demonstrates a high versatility that benefits not only the Building and Safety Division, but the entire city organization. And whereas, Donna's work with our counters, developers, owners reflects the highest standard of customer service and exemplifies the city's commitment to providing five-star customer service. Now therefore, on behalf of the entire City Council, the citizens of Dana Point, and myself, we hereby congratulate you upon your selection as Dana Point Employee of the Month for July 2016, and express heartfelt appreciation for your devoted service to our citizens, and express our sincere thanks for your exemplary service to our community. Congratulations.
First of all, I really want to thank Ursula and Mark Sutton for giving me the opportunity to work here at Dana Point and supporting me and giving me the opportunity to be a permit tech and training me. I really enjoy customer service, working in San Juan and now working here in Dana Point. As my children can tell you, I have lots of stories to share with them. One of my favorite stories, when I was working for the water department, is a resident called to ask me if the hot water reservoir was out of hot water, because she did not have hot water in her home. And so it gave me the opportunity to introduce her to her water heater. And another favorite is when the swallows returned to San Juan, I had a customer call me to ask me if they were bilingual. So, and a story I have here, my short time here at Dana Point, I had a customer come in and I was able to issue his permit for his brand-new home that he was getting ready to build, and he said, "You know, this is just like Christmas." So, it's a pleasure to work here, and it's a pleasure to serve our public, so thank you very much.
Those are some great stories. I don't think I could have fielded this question, so would you like to invite your family up for a photo?
Thank you.
And maybe you can introduce them as they come up?
This is my fiancee, Doug Greek, who happens to know the business, owner of the month, and this is my oldest son, Brandon, and my son, Bryce, and my daughter Savannah is in summer school right now down in San Diego, so she couldn't make it.
A nice round of applause for these folks.
On three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
All matters listed on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council, public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Are there any items to remove by staff?
None this evening.
By the public?
Item number eighteen. Thank you.
Item number eighteen. And by council members? Mr. Miller?
Item number ten, twelve, and thirteen, please.
Ten, twelve, thirteen. Any other items? Do I hear a balance, a motion to move the balance?
Second.
All those in favor, please cast your vote.
Madam Clerk, can you register abstention on item three for me?
The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to our first item, number ten. Mr. Chavas, is there a staff report?
Yes, there is, Mayor Tomlinson. Item number ten is our monthly Doheny Village update. What I'd like to do now is just ask Ursula to please provide the council and the community with an update as to the progress that's been made in the last thirty days. Ursula?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The staff report outlines the activity that's occurred in the past thirty days, which consists of continued efforts on the draft, the admin draft of the code, the form-based code, along with some environmental analysis. Our consultants are continuing with the EIR, and we have regular outreach with the community as they ask questions about the process, including the school district. And also attached to the staff report is a memo based on a request from Councilmember Shoful at the last meeting with some more detail regarding the Code Committee recommendations. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I pulled this in the second meeting in June, basically for the same reason I pulled it tonight, and I informed staff I was going to do this, because I went back and I reviewed some of the footage from the charrette, and I wanted them to be able to pull that little clip for, that we want to talk about parking and what happens in form-based code and how parking affects it. So could we roll that clip real quick?
Yes. Mike Rose, can you please?
So, just a couple more guiding principles here, and the first one is taking a form-based approach to parking. And I'm going to challenge this community, because I know you all like to debate about parking requirements. And you, unfortunately, like every other community, like debate about parking requirements in a vacuum and just like to talk about the numbers, right? It's really easy to get caught up in, "No, we need two per residential." "No, we need three per thousand square feet," without actually knowing what the impact of those numbers are, because what we find, especially in a place like the industrial arts area, if you have the too high of parking requirements, nothing's going to happen, right? So, as we go into drafting the form-based code, I just encourage you all, you know, when we get to the point of talking about that, we're going to be, I'm just going to be, we're going to be pretty progressive with the parking requirements, because we feel it's necessary to enable a lot of this to happen. And at the same time, we have studied sites and know that if you require too much parking, it's likely that not a lot's going to happen. So I just want to, I just want to challenge you all to kind of be open-minded and to work with us as we work through that. And even on these neighbor, along Doheny Park Road, in these existing shop, what we call the shop front buildings or main street buildings, you know, the conventional way of thinking about parking is that when a new use comes in, they may trigger different parking requirements. Like if it transitions from selling vacuums to becoming a cafe, all of a sudden, a lot of conventional zoning says you need, you know, six spaces per thousand square feet. And it's impossible, in a place like this that's completely built out, to provide that in a lot of times. So, we just need to think carefully about it, making sure it's not prohibiting what you all really want. And Nelson Nygaard's actually also, in addition to looking at the street designs, they're helping us think about the parking as well. But just want to, I just wanted to plant that seed, because I don't want to sort of come back when the form-based code is drafted and start, I want, start debating about numbers, because I think we need to talk about what kind of place do you want first, and let's write the set of rules that will get you that kind of place. And even if it might be out of the comfort zone, but let's talk about it, and let's talk about what the, what the benefits are of doing that. And, you know, maybe the parking gets reassessed every year or every couple of years to, I would say that the best thing that could happen for especially this retail district is for it to have a parking problem, because every great place has a parking problem, right? But we need to think, we need to think carefully about that, though, and how we can manage that as the place evolves. The general concept of improving connectivity and walkability...
I had him play that, because I'm very concerned, and by the way, that was Dan Paraluck from Opticos giving his presentation at the end of the charrette last summer, who was speaking. But I wanted to bring that up, because I'm very concerned about how progressive the parking approach is and how very similar it is, if it's, it might even be more aggressive than the parking program that was proposed in the town center. And in light of that Measure H results, you know, I have concerns about the community's appetite for going down and looking at parking standards like this for Doheny Village. You know, I don't want to get into a big parking debate at the public hearings when we're considering the new code. I think it's important that we have this discussion early, and I'm not saying that it's not okay if the public doesn't accept the form-based code. It is okay. But, you know, we need to have a dialogue and make an informed decision when it comes to parking, you know, informed decision, because parking standards really do dictate the form of development, and so our, our community has to try to make a choice right Dan says, you know, we can decide what kind of place we want it to be and write the rules and create the place, and that's what we did. And we, we came up with a plan or a code that created the walking district. But you can also take the approach that parking rules are the important part, and we need to start with them first and let those rules dictate what Doheny Village is going to look like. The choices, it really comes down to, do you want Doheny Village to be walkable, pedestrian-oriented environment, pedestrian-oriented environment, or do you want an automobile vehicular-oriented environment? I mean, it doesn't matter which way we go, we just need, as a community, to have this discussion. There's really no wrong choice here. And so, you know, if you want the park wants and walk, like we preached and preached for Town Center, we can do that. If you're thinking more like, you know, Del Mar and San Clemente, if you want that environment, we can do that. If you don't want that and you want to have, you know, large parking lots around every building, think about like the Big Five down there, and have an environment like that, we can do that as well. But right now, I think it's important that, you know, we reach out to the community and maybe take a look at what's happening in Doheny Village and kind of hit the pause button for a second and have staff reach back out to our community and set up these meetings and have these conversations now before we get too far down the road and we end up in the same situation we just had in the Town Center. So, you know, I guess that's kind of what I wanted to bring up, and I'd like to direct staff to go out and start those meetings, and I guess I'd have to make a motion to do that. Is that, is that correct?
Well, I think, one, when there's a motion, what I would suggest, say, you would make a motion to accept it, but provide staff with the following direction. And the one thing I would just say, Mr. Miller, is that I agree. After what we learned from Measure H, we need more public involvement, we need the public to get their DNA on the plan, but also to have, everyone needs to have an open mind of what they want to see for Doheny Village. My suggestion would be is that we're coming up on August, it's a vacation month, so what I'd like to do is what we found on the Town Center is we would start these meetings in earnest after Labor Day, when kids are in school and people are back in town from their vacations, and then hit the ground running at that point, because in August, a lot of times, people say, "Well, everybody's out of town and on vacation." So I would just ask that we will jump and hit the ground running, but I would ask that we wait until after Labor Day, when everybody's back in town.
Okay. And I just want to bring up one more point, that I was on the Code Committee for Doheny Village, and during those sessions, we did sample projects, and we would take a piece of property and decide what kind of building can we put on it, and the hardest part that we had was trying to park them. And so, you know, it really is going to be the keystone of how these things work, so I appreciate that, Mr. Chavas, and I'm willing to make that motion, well, unless anybody else has any comments about this.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll... Oh, do we have any public comment on that item? Madam Clerk? Please cast your vote. The motion carries five to zero. The next item is number twelve.
Item number twelve is a capital improvement project for Del Abyspo. One of the things that we're very proud of is that we are, we're out in front of road maintenance, because one of the things I found out in my last city is the minute you start deferring maintenance, you never catch up, and your roads all of a sudden become B and C and D rated. And so, I'm very proud of the job our public works team has done in making sure that arterials and our residential streets are taken care of. tierials and our residential streets are taken care of. So with that, what I'd like to do is just ask Brad to provide an overview of item number twelve, and then we'll be happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So this is a word of a previously budgeted project for the repair of Del Abyspo between Pacific Coast Highway and Stone Hill. That's road section. The, the street overlay repairs on Del Prado are funded in part up to the $500,000 OCTA competitive grant match approved for the project.
Mr. Paralak, can I, can I interrupt you for a second? I don't think the chamber screen is reflecting, is there a presentation going along with this? Is there...
No, just a oral report.
So only streets that are degraded sufficiently is to require overlay repairs are granted funds countywide. So this is a competitive grant and we were able to fund, it's a 50% grant. The city has been spending significant interim repair funds on this roadway to try to keep it up. And we've spent over $100,000 over the last couple of years just trying to do the patchwork on it and some of the crack ceiling that you see. So if close inspection, and I have some pictures if you'd like to see them, show where the cracking is throughout the street section there. Failure to repair the street at this time with a two-inch overlay of asphalt will lead to more subsurface failure beneath. And if we wait until the street fails where you're starting to see it dip instead of repairing two inches, you end up repairing a full section underneath of fourteen to eighteen inches where you're taking the subgrade, the subbase, the base course, and the wearing course out because it's completely failed underneath. So you try to maintain it in a way that you're doing the most cost-effective manner of work on it before it gets to a point where it gets three or four times as expensive for each square foot of repair. So that's why we're repairing it. And if you'd like, if you go out and take a look, you'll see a lot of patchwork out there. You'll see a lot of cracks, some of which have had crack seal in it. So in, in our business, this looks like the right time that we do this repair work for that project.
And I think what's also important to point out is that Brad had mentioned the word grant, is the fact that I think since I've been in town over fifteen years, we're well into over $100 million worth of capital improvement projects. And we haven't spent over $100 million on capital improvement projects because we can leverage it with capital improvement money, similar to the PCH medians, the ozone treatment plant, projects in Capistrano Beach relating to water quality. You know, we really try and take advantage of those monies. And one of the key things that puts us in a good competitive advantage is the fact that, one, we can demonstrate project readiness, and, two, we can provide a sufficient match. Because the last thing that OCTA and a lot of these agencies want to do is award a grant and then not have it get done. Because it's amazing how many cities turn money back because they, they don't necessarily have the readiness and they may not have the match. So, you know, we work very, very hard and carefully to make sure that we can leverage those types of monies to make sure we maintain the quality of streets that we have.
So my quick, you answered most of my questions, by the way. What I didn't understand was 500,000 of the 774,000 is from a grant or 774,000 the Dana Point piece of it?
It, the, it's a little bit more complicated than that. And the grant is a 50% grant, up to $500,000 for the work activities that the grant covers.
So, so if we come in at $774,000, let's just round it up to 800, the grant would be for 400,000 of the 800,000.
If, if all the activities were covered in the grant, yes. And the reason I say that is that OCTA is letting, is giving us grant money curb to curb. Some of the 700 and plus thousand dollars is for some work on the sidewalks to meet ADA requirements. That piece isn't covered. So our estimate is we will actually get between 320 and 340,000 of matching grant for this particular project.
Okay. And so how does that, how do we show that coming back into our budget?
In, in the budget documents, we showed that we, that a portion of that budget was from grants and a portion was from other sources like Measure M or the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. I'll move the item.
I'll second the item. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Motion carries five to zero. Next item is number thirteen. Staff report, Mr. Schach, please.
Yes, item number thirteen is a word of an amendment to a contract for Topographic's survey and landscape design services for the Crown Valley median drought conversion project. This council is aware, we budgeted approximately $400,000, possibly a little bit more for getting reclaimed water to the Crown Valley median. As part of our dialogue with South Coast Water District, it became apparent that the probability of getting reclaimed water to that median probably isn't going to happen. So one of the things we looked at is swapping that out to a drought tolerant theme. And one of the things that I asked staff to look at is to make sure that it's consistent with the PCH medians. We have a consistent look as we, you know, as we brand Dana Point, I want to have a consistently high-quality look on our medians. And so what this is, is to design those so they're similar to the PCH medians as far as thematic scheme. Brad, did I leave anything out or...
No, I don't think so. We did bring back to the council in February the additional funding for that landscaping.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at the request tonight is, is for $100,000, correct?
We're asking for a transfer. Our estimate for the work is about $84,000 for the two contracts, if you look in the fiscal summary section.
Yeah, I'm looking at, but it says, they're going to transfer 100,000. I get that because there could be unknowns.
It's for contingency.
You don't want to come back to us for 20,000. I get it.
Yes, sir.
So what about, what are we doing with the other $350,000 that we had budgeted? Right?
The, that goes for the landscaping. In order to do the landscape medians to match what we've done on Pacific Coast Highway, where you have the nice palms and rock and irrigation system there, that was actually what you funded with the February action that you took. So the palm trees are pretty expensive, and that's a very, very long median, the two sections there on Crown Valley. So it adds up to that $170,000. What we're asking for here tonight, though, is those costs are for construction. In other words, once you have plans and specifications and you're out to bid, that's a construction sign. The money that we're asking for tonight is for pre-construction, for design, to do the plans and specs. And in order to do that, we need some surveying done out there. And we don't have the expertise to do the landscape design and irrigation specifications in-house, so we pay for that service.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll move the item.
Any further discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The motion carries five to zero. Next item is number eighteen. Mr. Schach, please, a staff report, please.
Yes, item number eighteen is the returning of an item for second reading adoption of an ordinance regarding the vacation rentals that was recently approved by the California Coastal Commission. Subsequent to that meeting, we met with a group of residents, Tony Nelson, Mr. and Mrs. Hill, to talk about some of the concerns that Mrs. Hill had raised as testimony at the last meeting, or meeting before last, I believe it was. And what we did was, Mr. Schoeffel was in attendance at that meeting, and subsequent to that, he worked collaboratively with Ursula to prepare an attachment here that's a response to Mrs. Hill's questions and concerns. So with that, I'd like to ask Ursula to just probably provide a brief overview, and then we'd be happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
Well, the item is, before you, the first and second reading were to consider and approve the modifications made by the Coastal Commission because the council had already done a first and second reading on the ordinance as staff had prepared it and went to the Coastal Commission with some suggested modifications, and we brought those to you. And then at the last, or the meeting prior to the last one, there was some public testimony. And the responses to that are available if you have any questions about that or the ordinance itself. I'm available to answer those. Thank you.
Yeah.
Asking the Coastal Commission to pass on our legislative wisdom up here at the dais. And this is certainly one of the most talked about, debated, discussed, anguished issues that we've had, at least since I've sat up here, been sitting up here. My first question is, when, when do we have to get back to the Coastal Commission as to whether their suggestions, suggested modifications are acceptable? Or, I'll start with that one. When do we have to get back to them? Or it's deemed, or it's deemed a rejection by the council?
I'm not aware of anything in our code or in the Coastal Act that specifies an exact time in which we need to get back to the Coastal Commission. It's not certified, it doesn't become law until they certify it. They want to see us package up the second reading and submit it to them.
Okay, but you're not aware of a drop-dead date?
I'm not. Matt, are you aware? There may in fact be one.
Is that drop-dead date tonight by any chance?
No.
Okay, all right. Patrick, do you have any knowledge that would support or countermand that?
I'm confident it's not tonight. I'm not aware of any drop-dead date one way or another. Typically, there's not a real limitation on a second reading, although as a sort of a best practices kind of a thing. If there's an item that languishes on for a while, we like to see the second reading occur at least within six months.
You know, and, but also to add to that, because of the amount of vetting and dialogue that went on in the community, but also at the commission level and the negotiation that went on with the staff, the fact that it was unanimously approved and deemed to be the model ordinance that all cities should pursue by the commission itself, I think there's an anticipation that, you know, we'd get back to them sooner as opposed to later. But Matt, do you know if there's a certain, you know, the number of days that were required or...
I was just trying to look it up. My recollection is that it's six months.
Six months?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and they took the initial action, if I'm correct, in May?
Mm-hmm. Is it April? April?
April?
Yeah, I believe it was beginning. Yeah.
April.
Yeah. April what? Do you know?
April fourteenth.
April fourteenth. So May, June, July, August, September, October. So October fifteenth should be, or October fourteenth should be the, the drop-dead date, according to Matt.
Yeah.
So it appears to be.
All right. The second, my second question is if we were to say, we like some of your changes, we don't like some of your changes, and we have a whole raft of other changes that we really wish that we had passed in the seven years that we considered this ordinance, the first time around, and you were to tender that back before October fourteenth, what is the ensuing process in terms of process and also in terms of timeline? That's a compound question, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'll break it down if you forgot any part of it.
I think, I think I followed it.
Yeah.
So changes that the council would want to direct staff to go back, we'd have to do, we'd have to draft those and come back with another first and second reading to the city council that include those changes. We would then have to submit those to the Coastal Commission, and they could accept them at a staff level and then take it up to the Coastal Commission. No, I'm sorry, if they accept it, it would go up to the Coastal Commission for certification. If they had proposed modifications to those, we'd be doing the same thing we just did this last time. So they would make proposed modifications. The Coastal Commission would consider those. We'd bring it back to the city council for another first and second reading with those modifications. And then if there's a successful first and second reading, it would go back to the Coastal Commission for certification.
Okay, so how long would it take, realistically speaking, to prepare, if you knew tonight what those changes were going to be, present them to the city council for the consideration at a first and second reading, and then being able to get them to the Coastal Commission before the magic date of October fourteenth, considering August is a vacation month?
Right. Considering meeting schedule and the workload that we currently have on our plate, I'm thinking that we wouldn't be able to get a first reading to the city council until probably the first meeting in October.
Okay, so if you got the first reading in the first meeting in October, which is the first Tuesday...
Right.
Then presumably you might be able to get the second reading in two weeks later?
Presumably.
And then respond the next day to the Coastal Commission if everything went perfectly?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's, that's my questions for now, Mr. Mayor.
I also had a question, Mr. Munoz, maybe you can address this for me. There's been some discussion in the community about revocation of the short-term residential permits and how that process works and the renewal process. Maybe you can just give me, enlighten me a little bit on how that works?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Under the ordinance, the Director of Community Development has the ability to consider violations and then impose penalties or revoke a permit. I gather that there's been some discussion that there has to be a progressive discipline type approach to it, to where you couldn't have a revocation until you have three or four violations, for instance. And that's actually not accurate. The ordinance is very clear that the director can impose penalties or revoke. If there's a decision to impose penalties or revoke, the, the matter can be appealed to the city manager for a hearing. Our general practice has been to give notices and, you know, we could, you know, have other people on staff give you a better kind of summary, if you like, of what's been going on. But it's my understanding that in the three years this has been out there, we've had something like six complaints we've had to address and only one property where we had a second instance of a complaint. And in that second instance, what I, my understanding is, it turned out that we determined that the complaint wasn't really a valid complaint, that it was, you know, sort of a trumped-up charge.
And how many permits have we authorized to date? Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask Ted Harris to come forward. Ted is our code enforcement officer who's charged with the vacation rental program, and he's had it since day one. Ted, please step up to the podium.
Thank you. Yes, today we have 180 permitted and approximately 140 that's actually being used as vacation rentals.
How many complaints have we had? How many investigations have you done?
I have had five investigations. One that was founded where a notice of violation went out to the owner. Then I had one more complaint on that residence, which would have made it a second complaint. It was a nuisance complaint, a violation, disturbance of the peace. The Sheriff's Department was called out on that particular instance. I contacted the deputy, and the deputy stated there was four individuals inside the kitchen talking, and he could not hear them outside and did not feel that there was any type of a nuisance or disturbance going on. So that particular instance was not validated. So to date, we have one validated complaint in two and a half years.
And I think what's also important to point out is the fact that because of Ted's background as a retired Sheriff's Department investigator, he's been on top of this from day one. And the fact of the matter is, is pointing out... I'll call the scoff laws. The people who, let's say they're CCNRs, don't allow them, but they still try and operate outside of the law. And so Ted's very good at identifying those people and making sure that they comply with the rules. But I think other than that, the existing program has been moving along very good because of, you know, Ted very, very carefully monitoring the situation. And also, we require an annual permit. There's an inspection to make sure that certain life safety features are there. And so I think the people that have, do have the permits are truly the legitimate operators. And I think under Ted's stewardship, the program is very successful as compared to most other cities.
You know, I think a little historical background on where we're at is pertinent to this part of the discussion. We looked at this issue over an extensive period of time and the problem that we were faced with is that under our zoning code, short-term rentals are prohibited. But we had, you know, hundreds potentially of short-term rental operations going on. So the council grappled with it for a number of years, trying to determine how to handle it and how to address issues of people who hadn't paid TOT tax that would have been owing, the fact that they're operating illegally, you know, the whole host of issues. And so at the time that the, that the program was adopted by the council, written into it was provisions that basically said, we're going to go ahead and issue permits now while we're waiting for Coastal Commission approval. We wanted to get people to sign up right away. We had sort of an amnesty program, if you want to call it that, for people who agreed to sign up within a specific amount of time and start paying their TOT. But we also made it clear that we were issuing permits to people at their own risk and that if it wasn't approved by the Coastal Commission, that the program was going to go away and that by giving them the permits, they weren't getting any sort of a vested right or, you know, a long-term right to continue. So it was sort of an approach to allow us to move forward with the ordinance right away back in, well, 2013, even though it's not, you know, technically enforceable, so to speak, within the coastal zone. You know, the, the program has worked, as Mr. Chaucaix indicated, fairly successfully in terms of what we've been able to achieve, so.
And Ted, just one last point. You know, you've been a code enforcement officer for a number of years and you not only deal with the vacation rental, but you on occasion work on other types of abatements. Talk a little bit about, you know, the differences, compare and contrast the differences between the short-term rental versus the long-term rental that you've seen.
Well, I started my law enforcement career with Russ back in 1989, right here in Dana Point. So we had a lot of long-term rental issues, especially in Niguel Beach Terrace and that. My professionalism will tell you that in my law enforcement experience, I've had much more calls for non-compliance, for people creating disturbances, people not taking care of their property on long-term rentals than short-term rentals. From my experience, these last two, two and a half years dealing with the short-term rentals, most of your property owners, they want to maintain their property in such a manner that they can get return business. So therefore, they upgrade their, outside of their house to make it look presentable to get customers to come in. They upgrade the interior of the house, so therefore bringing up the value of the community. Whereas sometimes in your long-term, your owners aren't that, they don't take the initiative to upgrade as much because they have a long-term rental and they feel if they do, it's just going to get destroyed. So in my personal experience and when you're trying to deal with a long-term rental person, trying to get them evicted out of that process, you have a problem that's a longer lasting. Whereas when we do have a problem with a short-term rental, not only do we have the ability to cease that problem then, because their rights are just like a hotel, so we are able to evict them quite rapidly. Plus, we have the ability to take away the permit from the owner and stop that from occurring again. So my personal, with law enforcement and now dealing with this for two and a half years, I see way less disturbances doing with the short-term rentals than, than dealing with the long-term rentals.
And wouldn't you say that, you know, I think it was interesting, you told me that in San Clemente, they have, how many vacation rentals are there?
They have probably little over 480 short-term rentals compared to our 180 short-term rentals because we have somebody dedicated to short-term rentals. They don't have anybody who's dedicated to them. They, last year, I believe, brought in $240,000 in TOT tax where last year we brought in $440,000 just in TOT tax. That's not combining the permit fees that we got in and also with, I have been giving citations out to people who are trying, like, like stated before, there are people out there who are still trying to fly underneath the radar and not obtain permits. And if they do that, we'll give them a notice of violation. If they do not correct it, then we give them a citation. So we, we collected approximately $25,000 last year in those citation fees. But we've had a 99.9% where the people are conforming to our standards.
99% success rate in gaining compliance. And the other thing I think is interesting, of our 180 vacation rental operators, I think it's closer to 140 because, because of the programs, the rules and the regulations that the council's put in place, people don't want to follow the rules and they just, they, they get out of it because they don't want to put that much time and effort into it. So I think, again, the, the lower tiered operators are getting out of the business. So again, I think we're getting a better product. Wouldn't you agree with that, Ted?
Yes, and your, the market got saturated where people were thought, were, were thinking that it was going to be very lucrative business for them. But the problem is, the more and more that you get, you only have a certain amount of business, you start spreading that wealth. The people weren't making the money that they thought they were going to be making. So even though they obtained a permit at the beginning, thinking that this was going to kind of be a lucrative item for them, they found out the realization that actually it lowered the income for most of those people. So some of them actually have stopped. And that's why, even though we've given out 180 permits, probably only about 140 of them are actively doing vacation rentals.
Another interesting statistic, as long as we're talking about this, that you may find is that Niguel Beach Terrace, as you may recall, was a hot topic during this process. They have CCNRs that prohibit short-term rentals. At the time that this package was put, put forth, there was something like maybe 100 short-term rentals in the 400 units that are there.
Yes, yes.
And at this point in time, we suspect that there may be somewhere in the range of five, maybe seven, short-term rental operators that are operating illegally without permits that, you know, we can have our eye on and once we have a case built, we'll go after them.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, for the record, I did want to confirm that Matt Schneider, Planning Manager, was able to find that it is six months. So where we thought it was six months, it is definitely six months. Thank you.
Mr. McSor, did you have any questions for Mr. Harris, correct?
Yes, yes.
Any questions for Mr. Harris after?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Harris. I actually don't have any questions for Mr. Harris.
Any questions for Mr. Harris?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. McSor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some questions and I apologize if some of these are duplicative, but I really just need some clarification on a few things about this ordinance. And starting with, hopefully this is an easy one, I was looking at the ordinance and just the definition of a short-term rental, it seemed to say 30 days or less, but then a long-term rental is 30 days or more. Was I reading that right? Or what is a 30-day rental considered if you're on month-to-month? I think this is directed toward the city attorney.
I'm reading quickly. It was my impression that it was 29 days was short-term, 30 days was long-term. I'm guessing while I'm trying to read at the same time, Ursula, do you know the answer?
That's how we have been enforcing it and if the language isn't clear, we need to clarify that.
Okay, perhaps I misread it, but I, that was, that was the way I read it. And certainly, if I understand the intent, it's 29 days or lasts is short-term. So if you were on a month-to-month lease, living in a house, then that would not be considered a short-term rental?
Yes.
Right, then you're in trouble. Okay, got it. Okay, well, that was the first one. You, you had mentioned that...
I, I got some clarification. The 31st day, you become a non-transient tenant. So through the 30th day, it is a transient occupancy.
Okay, now, now you've just confused me a bit.
So, you're right, you said it right?
I had it on the screen a second ago, now it went down. But so the first 30 days is transient. Once you get beyond 30 days, it's no longer, transient meaning short-term, on day 31, now it's become a non-short-term rental.
But we would consider people on month-to-month because it's a month-to-month to be a long-term rental, correct, Patrick?
Correct, because it's consecutive days. Once you get to day 31, it's a long-term rental.
And this has been a long-established rule of law, that the periodic tenancy begins at the 30-day period.
Cities are all...
Depending, it could be a year, whatever the term is.
You can only regulate a transient occupancy as, the theory is that you can regulate hotels. You can't regulate apartments in, in the manner that we're talking about here for things like TOT and other business-type regulations. And the, the state law definition is 30 days. We, I know that we mimicked it in our code, I just couldn't remember what the nuance was until I looked over here a second ago.
Okay, this might be a hyper-technical point, but I'm looking at it from the person who is renting the property. If they rent the property and the tenant signs a month-to-month lease, for example, not knowing whether that person's going to stay longer than a month, do they have to anticipate they're going to stay longer? If, once they go into that 31st day, then they know it's not a short-term rental? Or does the tenant have to give notice on the very first day that he moves in that, hey, I'm moving out on the 30th day and then it would be a short-term rental?
If I could technically, under our codes, and I deal with this, with our hotels that end up having guests that stay longer than 30 days, until they stay the complete 30 days, they are technically a tenant. Doesn't matter where they're at in town, it doesn't matter what structure they're in, they are a transient. And technically, they would OT. I can't, we've never gone after an individual that stayed 26 days and decided to walk away from their 30-day lease and didn't stay the 30 days. We'd never be able to keep up with all those. But the assumption is in an apartment, even if you've got a month-to-month lease, even if it's 30 days and then there's a second lease for 30 days, it's, if you stay 31 days, doesn't matter if it's under two leases, you're no longer a transient.
Okay, I'll move on to my next question then. Talking about the permissive zoning, just so I understand, you talked about, because we have a permissive zoning code, if we don't allow for something, it is prohibited, which was the current state of things up until the ordinance was passed, what was it, two years ago?
Correct.
And, and so once the ordinance was passed two years ago, and the second reading was had, it went into effect for the whole city, but the part that applied to the coastal zone had to be approved by the Coastal Commission? Am I understanding that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and so...
And the council's intent was, this was going to be an all-or-nothing deal, that, you know, we were going to have it throughout the city or we weren't going to have it at all. And so if it didn't get approved by the Coastal Commission, the intent at the time was that we would revisit it and presumably revoke it throughout the city.
Okay, and, and when we went to the Coastal Commission for approval, their response was what? We need to move this into the zoning code as opposed to municipal code?
The way we structured it was, we came up with business regulations that the Coastal Commission does not have the right to, to regulate. Then we came up with zoning regulations, which are land use regulations, which they do have a right to regulate. We did it on purpose for a number of reasons. The most pertinent issue was that, or that we wanted to have flexibility. We were concerned that if we had detailed rules that were part of an LCPA, one that actually came up, things like insurance requirements, and then we found that we needed to change them, that we wouldn't have the flexibility to be able to do that. So the primary reason was, for doing the way we did it, was we wanted to have that kind of flexibility. Secondary reason was that we were concerned about, a key issue was minimum night stays. We wanted to make sure that we weren't in a situation where we could have people staying for one night minimum stays. And from the research we did at the time, we were aware that the Coastal Commission tended to favor one-night stays. In fact, when this was before the Coastal Commission, there was some discussion about that issue. And the thought was that we were going to keep the items separate. We'd have a zoning regulation and then a business regulation. So in other words, if you were in the business of a vacation rental, these are rules you have to follow, no matter what zone you're in. And then later on, we came along with a zoning ordinance that said, in these zones, you can be in this business. That latter one being what the commission could regulate. The commission felt strongly that they wanted to have the business regulations put into the LCPA. And so their suggested modification includes doing that. We had discussion with the commission about the concerns that we had. They did not change the minimum night stays that the council had approved, which was a significant point for us. And after we had discussion about our concerns about the flexibility we needed, they indicated that changes that did not limit or prohibit vacation rentals would be treated as de minimis changes to the LCPA. So they returned it to us, kind of undoing what our initial strategy was, but making changes that staff felt comfortable recommending to the council for approval.
If I can just add to that, though, because it's a fundamental understanding, our LCP does consist of our entire zoning code. So anytime we amend the zoning code, it does require an LCPA.
So is that, I guess the question is, why was the Coastal Commission, were they the ones that proposed that it's become part of the zoning code so that they then have a say over if we amend this ordinance in the future?
They wanted the business regulations to become part of the LCP. They didn't put, the business regulations are part of a different title of our municipal code. So Title IX is our zoning code, the business regulations are in Title V. They took that section of the Title V relative to vacation rentals and they pulled it into the, not to the zoning code, they pulled it into our LCP, which is the local coastal plan. We had to take, we had to do a zone, we had to allow, because it's not in a, currently not an allowed use, we had to allow the use. So that required an amendment to our zoning code, which was the initial trigger that brought it up to the Coastal Commission because we were amending our zoning code, which is in, requires an LCPA.
Okay, so now that we've allowed it, if in the future we were going to change it or do anything that might limit access to it, the Coastal Commission would have to sign off on that?
So, anything that would limit or prohibit vacation rentals, the Coastal Commission will treat as a major local coastal plan amendment. They agreed and we talked about some examples like insurance provisions, some other rules that are not limiting or prohibiting, they would see as a de minimis local coastal plan amendment.
And in understanding, I think you said the intent of the city council was to make this one, apply to the whole city as one ordinance, are we extending, if, if we were to decide, we'll still allow short-term rentals in the coastal zone, but we want to eliminate them throughout the rest of the city, does the Coastal Commission have a say in that? Have we extended their jurisdiction?
No.
Well, to the extent that we have RS7 zone in the coastal zone and without the coastal zone, so remember our zoning, we have zones, residential...
Let me, let me just make this, I think, simpler. It was not as simple as just waving a wand, saying it's out here and in there. We'd have to go through some steps, but we have the ability to completely deal with this outside of the coastal zone without the Coastal Commission's input. Is that a...
First of all.
There's a lot of steps to it, but that's the, kind of the bottom line.
I think we'd have to work with them a bit, but we'd have to create a separate article, which actually Matt has a little bit more experience with.
Okay, I guess I'm still not 100% clear. If we decide in the future that we want, let's say we did decide in the future that this ordinance is not working and we want to go back to the way it was, that will now, to get it back to the way it was, we're going to need the Coastal Commission to sign off on that, if that's what the, the will of the council is in the future.
Yes.
Yes.
But prior to that, because we have a permissive zoning code, it was prohibited and the Coastal Commission had no say in us prohibiting it.
Well, that's our argument, but I will tell you that the Coastal Commission doesn't necessarily agree with that argument, but yes, that is our argument.
So Ursula, let me ask you a question. If we were to come forward in six months, suppose council didn't take this action, we came forward with a development like Zephyr, could they put in there a condition that vacation rentals be permitted? We came forward with a development like Zephyr, could they put in there a condition that vacation rentals be permitted?
So let me make sure I understand the question. So, this second reading doesn't happen, so we're back to vacation rentals are prohibited.
Right.
And so, a project like Zephyr were to come forward and.
Any type of residential development, could the Coastal Commission work vacation rentals into that as a condition?
Because we had to do an LCPA there for the rezone, so if you got them involved, sure, they could say that they're not going to certify the LCPA without something.
I just wanted to interject. I, I don't believe they could specifically prescribe vacation rentals, but they could prescribe affordable accommodations to satisfy the coastal act.
There's a way that it can be, they can.
They could leverage it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll ask one last question. I think it was based on something Ursula said about, it's not their position that if we just prescribe them, if we don't allow them through our permissive zoning code, that that's okay. Can the Coastal Commission take any affirmative action against a city who has taken no action? Therefore, we don't allow the short-term rentals. Can they take affirmative action against us to say, you need, you need to enact this ordinance?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think anyone is capable of, of fully grasping what the Coastal Commission will or will not do at any given issue. They've been a challenge for us to work with on numerous projects over the years.
But, but we have determined that they are in favor of short-term rentals.
We know that they prefer short-term rentals. We know that many cities up and down the coast have zoning just like ours, permissive zoning, that, and they've taken the position that, under their permissive zoning, short-term rentals are a business, not a residential use, and that it is not permissible to operate those businesses under their code, and therefore they're prohibited. There has not been litigation on the issue, to my knowledge, I mean, it's possible there has been, that I'm not aware of, but to my knowledge, there has not been litigation on that issue where the Coastal Commission has asserted, you can't prohibit this. My, you know, educated guess is, I don't think that that's a hill that they would want to die on particularly. I think that, I think that we have the much stronger case. They can't impose it on us if we don't agree, you know, if you don't, there's, there's always legal remedies, if you're willing to pursue them, or if you desire to pursue them. I think that we had the stronger argument that they were prohibited. There were arguments being made by a number of people that were in favor of short-term rentals, that they had legal non-conforming rights, that they had estoppel rights, that they were making the same argument that we're just talking about here, that they just disagreed with our interpretation of the code. And, and I think after we vetted all those issues, the Council, the Council believed that the better position, there's no guarantees to the court rules on it, I suppose, but that the better position was that vacation rentals are prohibited in our city absent this change of ordinance that we adopted that now permits them under this regulatory scheme. And I think if this is not adopted, and the Coastal Commission doesn't say, well, okay, fine, we'll go back to where we were under your, you know, the, the initial ordinance that we presented to them, that, that they would be prohibited in our city.
Okay, actually, I have one more question, Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me. I just thought of, now, this, perhaps this is from Mr. Harris, but it has to do with enforcement. If we did not permit short-term rentals, in other words, if they were illegal, right now, we're saying, well, we're regulating them, we have a way to effectively regulate them. What did we do before, how did we go after people who were illegally renting them before?
You run in, unfortunately, with, with this, being an investigator, I know how some of the search warrants and all that work, you run into a lot of sticky points. One is, people go, why don't you just come and talk to them? Well, let's say I go to the door, I knock, and I talk to the people, I go, yeah, we're here from New York, we're here for seven days, we're just having a good time. Yeah, I rented, I did a short-term rental. People would think, hey, you got them. No, because that's hearsay, okay? So now they go back to New York, and I, you know, I submit this case to the, to the attorney's office to file the case. So they filed a case against them. I can't come up in court and say, this is what this person told me. In order to get that statement in, you're going to have to bring that person back from New York, and they were going to have to testify that that's what they told me, because me repeating what they said is hearsay. So that's one dilemma that you run into. Another dilemma that we run into as far as a criminal aspect of it, is you go onto the internet. If you go onto the internet, like I have been doing to try to prohibit these people from advertising for short-term rentals, it's been working wonderfully well without too many glitches. However, if somebody wants to push that envelope, you're going to have to obtain a search warrant from VRBO to get all these records, and it's not all that easy when you're dealing with a municipal code violation. It's not really, you're looking for business records, it's, it's a very tough thing to, it's like anything else. You can pass a law, but then you've got to understand how to enforce it. And once somebody beats it one time, then you're opening up the door for everybody to do it. So there's, it can be enforced, but it would be very, very difficult. Now, if you're looking at 200 to 300 people, that you're going to have to write search warrants on or write subpoenas for these people to come back from New York. Or, so, most of these people, some of these people from, from England and France and all that, they're not coming back to testify. So, it's a very, very, that's probably why, and prior to this, there was not much enforcement, because it's a very difficult ordinance to enforce.
And one of the things, Ted, how much did we make again in general fund revenue last year as a result of this?
Roughly $500,000.
And so, we don't have any complaints from the operators?
No.
We don't have, I recall that, how this chamber got rocking and rolling with Niguel Beach Terrace. I don't have any phone calls from folks in Niguel Beach Terrace. And one of the things that I sold to this Council when we did this was that the revenue generated would pay for Mr. Harris's effort, which, let's say conserves $150,000 a year. So, do the simple math, I got between three, or the city has between $300,000 and $350,000 in the general fund that can be used for road repairs, it can be used for storm drain improvements, can be used for whatever the City Council wants. And it helps pay for the impacts of the people who come to our town. Absent that revenue, I think the cost of going after, you know, 300, 400 people is going to be, Mr. Harris just isn't going to be able to do it by himself, so I would expect it's going to swing the other way to a cost of $150,000 to $300,000 conservatively to go after enforcing, you know, enforcing the fact that it's no longer here. And it's going to be very, very difficult, as I think Mr. Harris has articulated. So I just, I just throw that out there, you know, because I want to make sure the Council is aware of that.
We've had a lot of, I think, positive aspects of this ordinance when you're in an unregulated situation like we were for years and years and years and years.
We still may have some questions for you.
You know, it really became a little bit of the Wild West. And when the threat of, of eliminating the ability for people to continue to have the short-term rentals came up, we had packed audiences when we had, you know, meetings on this topic, both people that were opposed to it and people that were in favor of it. And it was a good collaboration, I felt like, but, you know, I mean, there were some people that weren't happy that they wanted it totally prohibited. But overall, the business, the people operating these businesses embraced it, recognizing that if they didn't, that they'd be put out of business. And, and to some degree, I feel like they're policing themselves a little bit. I mean, I'm really surprised that we don't have more cases of people who are operating without permits. And I think that's largely because, you know, we rooted out the vast majority of them really early on. The other thing that we've accomplished is a higher level of, of service for the public. I mean, that might not be the right way to put it, but, you know, just an anecdotal story. City manager got a call that he talked to me about a number of years ago, where someone from, I don't know, Des Moines or something, you know, came out here with their family to a, a short-term rental, which was illegal, but nonetheless, they, you know, went on the internet, they found it, they came out here. And it turned out that they were just renting a, like a crawl space that had been improved under someone's house. And, you know, it didn't even have its own bathroom, they had to use, they had to share the bathroom upstairs, and they could only do that through certain hours. And they demanded their money back, and the operator wouldn't give it back to them, and it was a big fight, and they wanted, you know, the city to help out. And, you know, it wasn't enough money that they could really do anything to really, to, to get a remedy. Now, the way this is structured, we have, first of all, we have inspections. You can't, you could never have a facility like that being used as a short-term rental, not, not legally. We monitor the internet, the advertising sites, to make sure people who shouldn't be operating aren't operating. The, you know, Mr. Sutton's department does a great job of going out and making sure that people are meeting all these minimum code standards that, you know, before they didn't have to meet. And, you know, there's a lot of pushback on that particular issue, because there's a lot of upgrades that had to occur to some properties to be able to have a short-term rental. So, it was a real balance to get there. The only, you know, at the end of the day, the only difference between what was approved in 2013 by the Council and what's before you now, is that the Commission has rolled in those business regulations into the zoning. I mean, I'm not stating it technically accurately, but effectively, they've rolled it into the zoning code, they've made it part of the LCP. So they now have some control over this. They, when we pushed back a little bit, they kind of said, okay, we'll give you some flexibility, as long as you're, you're coming up with regulations that aren't going to prohibit or limit, we'll be okay. And bear in mind that, in the language that they did approve, there's provisions like this. The Director of Community Development shall have the authority at any time to impose additional standard conditions applicable to all short-term rentals as necessary to achieve the objectives of this chapter. And that's just one that, you know, that's something they did approve. So we already have the authority to come up with more good neighbor-type regulations. You know, if, if we're finding that there's some issue that's going on, that's unique to short-term rentals, where they're causing problems in a neighborhood, we can impose a new regulation, as long as it's standard, to all of the short-term rentals. We still, we retain the ability to revoke, not just impose penalties after a fourth time or revoke after a fourth time, but we can revoke. I mean, if somebody doesn't pay their TOT, we're not going to give them five bites of the apple, we're going to revoke their permit, first time. And we can do that. And you also have to have an annual permit renewal. So we, you know, it's not just a matter of if we get complaints, but we have an opportunity every single year to decide if we're going to give somebody a permit again, and if we know that we've got a problem on our hands, we can address it. So, you know, it's not, it's not the, the proposal we originally put forth to the Coastal Commission. And it's a compromise, I suppose. But we at least have the benefit of having three years of operations now to, to feel like we've got a program that seems to be working. And, I mean, I, you know, this is comfort or not, but the Coastal Commission did, you know, make a comment that they view this as a model ordinance for cities, so.
And they appreciated the work that the Council did going in, and the work of the community. But I will tell you, this is a successful program because of Mark Sutton and his building staff, and this guy right here. This guy was one of the best investigators I've ever had the pleasure of working with. And when I heard he was going to retire, I was on him like a cheap suit, saying, I got work for you, Ted. And it's because of Ted's efforts here, and the experience he brings to the, to City Hall every day, we have a very successful program that works. And, you know, I just want to make sure these two gentlemen and their respective teams get acknowledged for the great job they do, because, you know, they, they, they've done more than I could have ever asked them to do, and I just wanted to thank them publicly for what they do.
Mayor Portman, any further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Harris, that's all I have for now.
Does anybody have any further questions for Mr. Harris? But I do have one for Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris, vacation rentals, are they primarily single-family residences? Are they apartments, duplexes, fourplexes, what, what kind of, what are they?
In our city, they're primarily going to be single-family residences. We only have one condo association that the HOA actually allows for short-term rentals, and that's the one over on Cornish, Ritz Point. They allow seven days and longer. All the other, most of your condo associations do not, they prohibit short-term rentals. So if any HOA prohibits a short-term rental, then we do not issue them for that. Niguel Shores is another one, Monterey Bay, they do not allow short-term rentals. So if the HOA prohibits short-term rentals, the city does not issue a permit for that location.
I guess my question is more, there's a number of duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. Is, is there an abundance of vacation rentals in some of these properties?
An abundance? No, not, not, we do have, we do have a lot of the duplexes and triplexes. I think, I can probably count on one hand how many of those are vacation rentals. They're, they're not being all taken up, like if you have a fourplex, they're not all four being rented out as a short-term rental. In the Lantern District, I think we have one, that's it, for short-term rentals.
Okay, any further questions for Mr. Harris? If not, thank you for your time. Shoffel, your question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patrick or Ursula or Matt, I'd love to drill down just a little bit more on, on really where we are with the status of our ordinance, which I think most people on the facts can agree is working quite well, since it was originally adopted by the city back in 2014. As you mentioned, Mr. Munoz, until this thing is certified by the Coastal Commission, and we all know the Coastal Commission is going to change its member composition by the end of this year, and there will be new members on the Coastal Commission, different from the ones who voted to approve this back in April. What, what is the current status, the enforceable status of, of our ordinance that works so well? And, and how long will that status last if the Coastal Commission does not certify the, our zone text amendment and all of that stuff?
Well, we basically acknowledge the fact that people were operating illegally. We gave them a, a permit to continue to violate our zoning on the basis that we were pursuing this with the Coastal Commission and had reason to believe it was going to be approved. But when we gave them those permits, we were very, very clear, and we gave them, you know, they signed an acknowledgement to this effect that, I can't remember the exact wording, but the gist of it was that they are acknowledging that this is not giving them any sort of rights. They can't assert they have illegal non-conforming use, that they're, you know, doing this at their own risk, and that if the Coastal Commission doesn't approve it, that they're going to have to stop. And so if, if this doesn't go forward, and if we go back to the, the prior situation where vacation rentals are not permitted, we'll revoke all the permits we have, we'll, you know, have our code enforcement staff go out and make sure that people are not operating. One of the good news, or silver linings, I suppose, if that were to happen, is now we have a really good inventory of who's out there that we need to go talk to, which we wouldn't have had before.
Okay, so, and I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm going to interrupt you just a little bit here. So if, between now and October 14th, which is our drop-dead date to get back to them after following their April 14th action on this thing, the risk of our being able to enforce this thing the way we've been enforcing it is somewhat small, because people are used to it, they rely on the permits. The folks who are freed from the externalities being imposed on their neighborhoods by the bad operators for this period of time have gotten used to that. The folks who prohibited the use in their homeowners' associations and made a private selection to not have this be permitted by the city are relying on that. And I, I don't personally see a huge risk of that going away between now and October 14th, although I guess it could. I guess somebody could file a declaratory relief lawsuit and say, you can't enforce this thing, you know, against us. I guess somebody with standing could, could do that.
Well, we would simply say, okay, give us your permit back.
Right.
You know, and then stop operating, because you're operating illegally.
Right, but, but, so, so what I'm saying is, we, the risk isn't that great. Now, let's say we go back sometime before October 14th, and we say, thank you for playing, California Coastal Commission. Here's, here's the 10 other changes we'd like to this ordinance, because we thought it over since February of 2014, or whenever it was originally submitted, and the year and a half that we spent negotiating all of these conditions with you. Was it a year, about 18 months, something like that? But in the last couple of months, for whatever reason, we've decided we have many other things that we'd like you to consider, Coastal Commission, and, and put in this ordinance. And then, you know, once, once, assuming the City Council does a first and second reading of all those things, sends it back to the Coastal Commission, my question is, when does the Coastal Commission have to review that request? Do they have to drop everything else on their agenda and say, the city of Dana Point is back with its response to our April action with 10 more items?
This is probably a better question for Matt, in terms of some of the processing stuff, but, you know, kind of at a high level, what you're really asking is, if we don't accept their suggested modifications, and either tell them we want to go back to what we originally did, or, okay, we understand what you're saying, we'll accept some of them, but we, only if we do these other things. I mean, you're really opening a, a negotiation, which is really what the intent of the Coastal Act language is, is that it's a suggested modification, and so in theory, we have the right to suggest other things back or to say no. In the practical world, that doesn't always go so well, but I think the time, the six months is the time we have within, within which to respond.
Right.
If we respond with a, we don't accept your modifications, what about, either we go back or we go forward with something slightly different, then it's a dialogue, and Matt. And Matt, is there, are there any timing parameters on that that you're aware of? Off the top of my head, I don't know the answer.
I'm only basing this on my previous practice. I really think the options, the decision tree, is you can either accept or reject. If we were to reject, they would treat it as a new application.
And we'd go back.
We can't, it's not a cycle where we can go through rounds of modifications or different iterations.
So there are no counteroffers, is what you're saying?
Correct.
I mean, I haven't dealt with it myself, but I read cases on it where I've seen it occur. So I don't know, I'm not personally familiar with the process, but I do know that you can go back to them and say, well, we'd like to do something else. Now, they just may say, well, no, and treat it as a rejection. I mean, the practical world, I think what Matt said may very well really be the reality. But in theory, they might say, okay, well, let us rethink it. And I just don't know what their timing would be if they were open to that. And it's assuming that they wouldn't even be open to it, which is a big assumption.
So, and Matt, your, your sort of response, not response to what Patrick's saying, is that in your experience, there are no counteroffers. It's sort of like the law where a counteroffer is deemed to be a rejection of the original offer.
That's correct. This is just my practical experience. There may be a provision in the code that I'm not aware of that allows for modifications, but in practice, and I've practiced a number, or I've implemented a number of LCPAs, when you get to this step in the process, it's essentially you either accept or reject, and there's no additional time for modification.
Okay. So assuming there is a rejection, and that's been my experience, by the way, and I don't mean to quarrel with the city attorney, it's just been my experience in matters like this, then after that point in time, we would lose the benefit of the ordinance that seems to have been working very well all of this time. Is that an appropriate conclusion?
I believe that's correct. It would not be certified, and you would essentially be starting at zero again.
So we would, and would that be citywide or would that be just in the coastal zone?
That I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. Just because of the long history of this, I don't know.
Mr. Munoz, can you?
Well, the commission only has jurisdiction within the coastal zone, so.
Okay. So Niguel Beach Terrace would be uncovered at that point if the ordinance were to go away? Or anybody within the coastal zone, let's just say, Beach Road, Niguel Beach Terrace, you know, all those places?
Let me back up for a second. My comments before was that it's theoretical. I agree that as a practical matter, the Coastal Commission treats it as, you don't like our modification, okay, well, it's a no. So, and if that were to occur, then I think the reality is, yeah, that the ordinance will be off the books. In order to get it off the books in the rest of the city, we'd have to take a further action. It's my assumption that the council would want to do that if this council's philosophy is the same as the council's philosophy that adopted it, which was that this would be a citywide program, not just on the, not a program that's only available in the portions of the city that are outside of the coastal zone. So.
Okay. Now, that answers my question, and that concludes my question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Miller, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess, you know, I'm reading Section 9.07.260, Short-Term Rentals. And I'm concerned about the last sentence in this where it says, "Any changes that limit, modify, or prohibit short-term rentals in the coastal zone as determined by the Executive Director of the Coastal Commission shall be submitted to Coastal Commission for certification as a local coastal plan amendment." How does, so that sounds like they have total authority. Any change that happens, it's completely up to them whether they're going to accept it or not. My question is, how does that affect the CCNRs for an HOA? I mean, what prohibits the Coastal Commission from coming in and saying, your CCNRs don't allow short-term rentals? That's in violation of our coastal, the Coastal Zone Act or Coastal Act. You have to allow these.
So the current ordinance, which includes their modifications, already says if CCNRs prohibit it, then it's prohibited. And the commission has effectively accepted that. If a new development were to come in within the coastal zone, if their CCNR is prohibited, we don't have any, the city doesn't impose that, the developer imposes that. Now, it's at least possible that as part of the review process on a new development, that the commission might feel strongly about this and try and make the argument that you have to permit them, that the CCNRs cannot prohibit them. I mean, theoretical situation, look at the Dana Marina Inn. If someone were to come down there and build a residential project, get all the zone changes and everything else that would be required to do that, the commission might say, okay, well, you're eliminating a lower-cost visitor accommodation by getting rid of the Dana Marina Inn. And so we want you to replace that by, even though this is residential, by at least allowing for short-term rentals. So your, you know, a condition of your, I can't remember if it'd be, I guess it'd be an L, no, it'd be a CDP there, not an LCPA. In theory, if the Act even applies, or I'm trying to think of our zoning codes.
I think the risk is really low because the Coastal Commission doesn't approve CCNRs. In fact, CCNRs don't even come before the Planning Commission as entitlement documents. Those get, they're required as a condition of approval when they're needed, and they get approved by city staff. So I think it's very unlikely that the Coastal Commission would be looking at a project's CCNRs. And as Mr. Munoz mentioned, it's the developer who would decide to impose that or not.
And it would only apply with restricted new developments. They can't undo CCNRs in existing developments.
So my, well, that's what I'm getting to. So say there's a development out there that their current CCNRs don't prohibit short-term rentals, and they choose, they want to modify those to prohibit them. Does the Coastal Commission have authority there?
No.
No.
Even though they could consider that restricting coastal access?
Remember, they only have authority on the city's regulations, not the homeowners' regulations. The homeowners can get together and agree. It would take a, I believe unanimous, if you don't already have an HOA, it would require unanimous consent of everybody to create CCNRs to prohibit. If you have one, it's typically 75% vote to change the CCNRs. So, and they would have no say-so on that. It's internal, doesn't go through the land use process, it's not part of an LCP.
But, you know, an example would be Niguel Beach Terrace. Part of the problem we had there was the CCNRs prohibited them, but the short-term rental operators had taken control of the HOA board, and there was selective enforcement of the CCNRs. And so what would happen is we'd have residents come to the city and say, we want you to come in and enforce your zoning code because our board isn't actively, you know, enforcing our existing CCNRs. And so we get pulled into a no-win situation because we're being pulled into a divided community. Having said that, one of the things that the council worked with the Niguel Shores, or Niguel Beach Terrace Board, was that when this was approved, they allowed the operators to go and attempt to try and change the CCNRs by vote. And if I recall correctly, they were unsuccessful in doing that. So again, it was the local property owners finally getting control of their HOA. So my concern would be that we could be going backwards. But again, that's, you know, we'll deal with whatever the council wants to do.
Okay. So another quick question. If, say we wanted to change our ordinance and say you can no longer have a two-night minimum, it has to be a seven-night minimum, for example, would the Coastal Commission have authority over a change like that?
Yes.
Yes.
And so we're effectively giving up control of our ability to change this ordinance?
Those types of regulations, yes. I mean, that example definitely would be something the Coastal Commission would have a problem with.
Because Ursula was successful in negotiating them off the one night.
I know. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
Yeah. And in our original, our original thinking was to keep these, the business regulations and the zoning regulations separate so that the council would retain control over that. So.
I understand. But we're kind of entering, I mean, we have a three-year track record with this, but, you know, up to this point, the Coastal Commission has had no regulatory authority over it, correct?
In essence, correct, yes.
So what I'm concerned about is, as we move forward with this and they gain total regulatory authority over this, what's to stop them from coming in and making changes and changing our plan to suit needs that they have? Well, hold on, let me finish. And as a council, we don't have the ability to tweak this to meet the needs of our community. I mean, we may need to do that. This is a brand-new ordinance for us effectively. We may need, over the 10 years that we've, or seven years we've been working on this, the environment around this has changed within our community, and I anticipate it to change in the next five years on what people are willing to accept and not accept. How are we supposed to have control of an ordinance to address those needs when the Coastal Commission can just walk in and say, no, you can't do this?
So the one thing you said that, you know, I was shaking my head at, is that the Coastal Commission can't come to you and change it. They don't have that authority. They have the ability to approve changes that you want to make or to deny them. So what you're saying is correct in the sense that if you feel the need to, if the seven-night minimum became a really important issue to you, then you would have to go through the Coastal Commission process. I can just tell you philosophically, they've demonstrated that's an important issue to them. I suspect they'd have a lot of problem with that. So, you know, if you approve this, you're definitely giving that ability up. And that's just, those are the facts.
I understand. But my concern about it is, has the community either embraces or rejects this? We don't really have the ability to make the changes needed to address the issues that the community's having with it.
You're addressing policy issues to me.
No, I know. No, but I'm not saying policy issues. I'm saying if our policy is to change something, this is not a policy issue, this is a regulatory issue. If the council made a policy decision to change this, the Coastal Commission has authority to stop it.
You're, that's absolutely correct.
Okay. So that's it. So that's what I wanted.
Yeah, that's correct.
And the last thing is, does the Coastal Commission, do they consider short-term rentals affordable coastal access, or affordable coastal accommodations? Do they consider that?
Yes.
So, but I guess I'm kind of extrapolating out here. Does that give us the ability to say, let's say on the Bates Motel, there's 30 beds there, we have to replace, we just replace with 30 new short-term rentals those beds? Can we make that argument?
No, because the Town Center Plan itself has very specific language in it relative to that property. And it said that in lieu fee needs to be paid.
No, but it also said, or they could provide them somewhere else in the city.
Said onsite, they can provide them onsite.
Oh, they had to be onsite.
Or they can pay in lieu fee.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, but this would count towards our.
I guess in theory, if someone built a residential project there that had the ability to have short-term rentals, that in theory, that might meet that provision. I'd have to look at it more closely and make sure the zoning would allow it, but, you know, extrapolating out, it strikes me as potentially possible? Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Just a very short question. To clarify a point, I would argue, I would assert that the Coastal Commission does have regulatory authority over our proposed ordinance, or it would have never been offered to them for an LCP.
Yeah, the.
The fact is, with the LCPA there, which may have conditionally approved subject to our acceptance or rejection, as we can't put it, we have ordinance that in fact works that can regulate what has shown itself to be a pretty awful problem for the better part of the decade, probably well before that. So while it's upsetting to some, it's certainly upsetting to many times, that we don't have a better choice to change that legislation in the future to make a policy change to reflect the, you know, the rule of the tradition, you know, the county, because of this preemptive state law that we have to deal with, which is state coastal act policies that will always shower over anything we do here as a locality, that at least we would be heading into that with an ordinance that actually works and regulates what has historically shown itself to be a very, very troublesome problem. So I'll save the rest of my comments for this, but I wanted to clarify the table. Certainly you have regulatory authority right now, tonight, but we would.
And I guess my earlier comment was that, my response to the question that was posed was that they really don't have any say-so over what we've been doing up until now. It's really a question of if we want to go forward and have a valid ordinance, they do have the regulatory authority over that. So, you know, you're faced with a policy choice ultimately.
Well, I agree that, moving forward, if we adopt this tonight, they'll definitely have regulatory authority. And maybe they do have some in our coastal zone right now, but all the short-term rentals outside the coastal zone, they don't have regulatory authority. Is that correct?
That's right.
All right. Okay. Thanks.
I see no further questions from council. We'll move into public comments. First speaker will be Angelina Busimi, followed by David Bartholomew and Nadia Starner.
Good evening, everyone. It's my first time, so I'm a little nervous. My name is Angelina Busimi, and I live on Collegio Drive in Dana Point. I'm a homeowner, and I'm hoping I'm talking at the same, at the same topic about short-term rentals and sober living facilities, which are short-term rentals. I live across the street from one, and I first, I want to say thank you so much. I was here at the last city meeting with my neighbor, and she had mentioned that we saw 20 mattresses being delivered. And on a Sunday afternoon, someone from code enforcement actually drove on the street. The garage door was open, he walked up the driveway, took photos, and the next day, there was a U-Haul truck, and they removed most of the mattresses. So I want to say thank you very much for that because that wouldn't have happened. And my only concern is, I go to work every day like all of my other neighbors, and, you know, short-term rentals are businesses. So for the one owner that has a short-term rental, or they're renting their house to a sober living facility, they're making the money. But for everybody else on the street, they're very sad, and they lose their happiness and their enjoyment. And they think about the children that live across the street from a sober living facility that can't go outside and play and enjoy their backyard the way they used to. And short-term rentals, two days is nothing. It's just, there's strangers every day who's going to be there, and they're partying, and they're saying things, and there's so many cars, and it's unnerving. There was one person actually on his phone, and he was talking, and he said, yep, I'm in and out of rehab, and I'm in and out of jail. And those are the people that I'm now living with. So I just want you to consider, when I hear 140, you know, pending permits, I think about 140 neighborhoods that are being negatively affected. Because these are our homes, and we go to work every day, and we love where we live, and we feel like we're losing our neighborhoods. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. David Bartholomew?
My name's David Bartholomew, I'm in U-35 years in Dana Point. And I really supported Measure H, though I didn't get out and collect signatures like I did with the recall of Superintendent Fleming and school board members and recalling some other people here in Dana Point. I am really shocked here because I can't believe it. I've been in lots of board meetings. I've been in advertising design most of my whole life for developers and homeowners. And that Niguel Beach Terrace, that was affordable housing, you know? It just turned over to investors. It wasn't intended to be rentals. It was intended to be homeowners' opportunity to own their home for the first time. And you guys are turning it into a business. How much money can we make? Every conversation from every one of you guys is like a business board meeting. How much can we make off this, right? From council to council.
I think you're mistaken. We prohibited short-term rentals at Niguel Beach Terrace.
I'm sorry, Patrick, I didn't hear you.
You've got it exactly backwards. We prohibited short-term rentals at Niguel Beach Terrace.
Yeah, back in '83 or '84?
No, always, and specifically with the ordinance that was adopted in 2013, and the ordinance sits in front of the council this evening.
I'm going to trust your insights there. I might have the wrong project because, I don't know. I worked for a lot of the big companies from Taylor Woodrow Homes, out in Palm Desert, the Sunrise Company, and Computer, Hewlett-Packard, and American Data, lots of nice companies, small agency. I just wanted to bring to mind something that Scott said. I just wanted to bring to mind something that Scott said. He said that he's going to propose at least ten changes to overrule Measure H. That's what he said. Richard, you said to get back the way it was before Measure H. I'm, I mean, I didn't misinterpret that. You said, let's get back to where it was before Measure H passed.
Sir, for the record, I never said such a thing this evening or any other evening at one of these meetings, so you're mistaken. And if, and if you're not mistaken, please point out where I did.
Um, guys, you're going to give me an extra minute here, because you're interrupting me? Everything here tonight was about circumventing the Coastal Commission. Those are our protections. Circumventing the CCNRs, really? I mean, the owners of the CCNRs are going to be really upset about that. I think there's a, just based on what you guys have said tonight, the three people we just elected for the city council, I really wish you guys would stand down. Just, let's, let's elect five people that are not for business, not for the business of outside investors. We want business who are locals, like the surfers, the community. The coastal environment is, is, is the California coastal protections for the surfers, for the local residents. Not for outside investors, and that's all you guys talk about. How about it? One more minute? I, uh, talked about being active in some of our community, especially the school district. Doug, you'll appreciate this. When they were, they spent, uh, over a hundred million dollars for that school site up by the dump. It was going to be given to them for free. So I, I, I know about how mismanagement of city funds is going, but one, one last thing. Joseph, I have here, it says ten years of public input for city councils and, and councils to steal away environmental protections. That's, it's what it really becomes down to, is that you guys, that'll be my last point. Everything tonight, like a business board meeting, is about how you can make money, not how the citizens voted against you on Measure H. So I don't see any reason why we shouldn't just continue and recall three more city council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Nadia Starner, please.
Hi. I've never spoken at a city council meeting, and I don't think I've been to more than five. But I'm here to talk about the temporary rentals or the vacation rentals. And like the woman before me that spoke, I think it is a problem, and I think the temporary rentals or the vacation rentals are turning into the sober living temporary rentals. And back in nineteen sixty-five, there was something called the Great Fund, and that was to fund the police in our city, the fire departments and maintenance, so our city can have control over that. So if you're going to allow the sober livings or vacation rentals, and I heard the gentleman say how much revenue and taxes it brings into the city, then we should be applying all that revenue to more policing and, and more, more resources to control what's going on in our city. I, I don't know how the planning is being set, and I don't know how the public is being informed, but there's got to be a committee just to inform the public in layman's terms, and so we can all understand. And, and I'm just trying to understand it myself, but I'm looking around and seeing things like the center of my town in Dana Point, there's a big Bevmo. And that only tells me that I really don't want to spend much time in my town anymore, because it's, it's becoming more of a, um, more controlled by, and I don't want to say greed, and one man wrote a book called The Lovers and Schemers, and it's the same man who wrote Dirty Dozen, and it talks about the changing environment of our area. But I would hope to get you, council, to maybe speak to each other and maybe develop a committee to where we can communicate the wants and needs of the public, as you've been saying throughout this meeting. And maybe get a clearer vote on what goes into the city and how. Because I think we feel like we're being blindsided. And I know you're doing a great job, and you're doing what you can and, and what you've been given, but maybe we need to get more out of the Great Fund back. And I'm a bit nervous, but I think I'll write it and submit more ideas to the council. But I would really like you to look at the temporary housing and how it's affecting the neighborhoods. And how it's not being policed, or, I'm sorry, policed, or it's not being watched over properly. And I'm just starting to call the Sheriff's Department more and more when I see the parking violations, the streets being overcrowded, the people sitting on the sidewalks down the Palisades Hill where you can't walk down because bikes are laid across and whatnot. But, yeah. So if, if we can just, if you're going to allow that, you're going to need to get it policed as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Final speaker will be Barbara Wilson.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. There was a letter sent to all of you by Betty Hill, and it was her concern about issues with the short-term rental ordinance. And just listening to some of your comments tonight about some of the concerns about voting on it tonight, approving it, and then finding maybe we didn't do the right thing. Maybe we haven't thought of everything that should be put into this before the Coastal Commission has our throats. So, some of the things I just wanted to bring out, if you hadn't had an opportunity to read through this, was one of the things that she brought out is particularly that homeowners associations have a great advantage over probably more than half of the city of Dana Point in that they can stop short-term rentals in their neighborhood of less than thirty days. And, and the fact that we're hearing that most of these short-term rentals are single-family homes, it's showing that a lot of our neighborhoods are going to be impacted big time with people coming in, having their vacations at our expense. And I know that it's important for owners to be able to have opportunities to use their properties, but the people who live in the neighborhoods who have to stomach their use of it is, is, needs to be considered too. Some of the recommendations that Betty had recommended was putting a limit on perhaps twenty-six weekends a calendar year, perhaps to limit the use. So you, people in the neighborhoods are not going to have to put up with this day in and day out. Revoke a license for six months after two violations instead of having four violations in twelve, in twelve months. So that there is some way to keep these owners keeping their homes in a position where they're going to be amenable to the neighbors. Prohibiting Airbnb and other advertisers from listing Dana Point properties that don't have a license. I don't know how easy that would be to do, but hopefully there would be some avenue that we could work on that. Perhaps designating the number of short-term rental properties operated by a single owner so that we don't have a lot of bed and breakfasts or hostels in a residential neighborhood. Also disallowing any licenses or grandfathered terms to transfer to new owners of rental properties. So, I hope tonight you will not vote in affirmative for this, and we'll give it some more thought and discussion and ask for more input from the community. I think this is such a huge issue for, for our city, and the fact that the rain tree that started out to be condominiums is now going to possibly be apartments, has a hundred and nine apartments that are going to be in the community. I have real concerns about, you know, what's happening to our city to make everybody proud of it and not just have it be a transient area. So thank you for your input.
Thank you for your comments. I neglected to call Lynn Smith. So Lynn Smith will be our actual last public comments on this item. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. On, I wanted to comment on Betty Hill's letter because I was hoping you had already read it, so I didn't have to take time making the points. But I think she makes a lot of huge good points that would make the vacation rentals good for residents as well as the vacationers. I know from them speaking, you're not for sure whether yes or reject. They're not for sure the city, that the Coastal Commission does that. They may let you make amendments to maybe putting some of the things that Betty talked about into that. You don't know for sure that they won't let you. It's not all or nothing. And you don't, but knowing that you can't change it after, I can't imagine that you would vote for it if you can't change it. Like Mr. Mueller said, it's changing community. And maybe all of a sudden, everybody thinks it is all about the money for a lot of people. And that's not right. Because when the gentleman here, it, it, it was surprising to me that he makes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for what he does a year.
He doesn't make a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's the cost of, no, the cost of the program supporting what he's doing.
You, you, I'm, I know, but you made it sound like that. I'm sorry.
I'm just clarifying it for you, ma'am.
Okay, so don't get defensive, please. I know it's hard for you guys to sit up in here, somebody saying different things than maybe you believe anyway. It's easy to get defensive. But I just think the rules are not bad. Business regulations are not bad. And these are neighborhoods. It's not a business. Vacation rentals next door, I don't know who's going to be there the next day. I've, I graduated from college in seventy-one and moved here and bought my house in seventy-six, and I've lived on the same street in Capo Beach all those years, forty-three years. And we're family. Do I have that when the people next door to me are in and out all the time? And it's, it doesn't happen. It's never going to be family-friendly. And it isn't all about the money. And I'm glad Mr. Mueller also said about, let's hold on and ask the community, and let's not go so fast. I've been a businessperson, and now I teach art at San Clemente High School. Every time I move really fast, I fall down. Every time I make a fast decision and don't consider everything, it's wrong. Because I need things from all different directions, not just my own thoughts. So I don't know about voting on that, yes or no. I, I don't know. I, I request that you read Betty Hill's letter. I had a lot of good ideas. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. I see no more public comments. I'll turn over discussion for council members. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was kind of taken aback by Mr. Bartholomew. I, I mean, maybe I didn't make myself clear. I wasn't trying to say that we need to overthrow CCNRs. I want to protect them to make sure nobody comes in and tries to overturn them without the, the, the members having any input on that. That kind of caught me off guard. And it's something else about ten years of environmental stuff. I don't know what that is either. So i- if I'm missing something, please bring it up and show it to me after the meeting, please. But, you know, the, the last speaker just, just kind of hit it on the head. I mean, that's the concern. I read this letter today. And there are some goods, there's some good things in here. If we approve this tonight, we don't have the ability to act on any of these and add them, from my understanding. I mean, without coastal approval. And so, you know, that's my concern right now. I don't know that, that I can make that vote tonight, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the council members and see how they feel about this.
Mr. Olivera, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When this first came up in two thousand thirteen, I voted against it. Since then, I've seen where we have created more rules and more eyes to look at the problem that short-term rentals have caused. And tonight's testimony I've heard is supporting that we now have the ability to correct those problems a lot easier and a lot better than we'd had in the past by not, by turning a blind eye like we used to. Some of tonight's comments kind of missed the mark. A lot of frustration on what's going on, but short-term rentals, I agree with Councilman Mueller's point, but I wanted to try and clarify the statement, we can't change it after this. We could make another submittal, but we just, it's got to go through the Coastal Commission.
That's correct.
So a change could be made.
Yes, I mean, we have to go through the process and, but yes.
So there, there is a process to allow a change.
Yes.
So the fact that we can change it, we're making a policy that is flexible, we made that state, even though, like I said, I voted against it, made that statement, made that step to try to regulate it. And we have successfully been regulating it. Seems like we're doing a very good job. Based on the record, the operators are not complaining. So what we're telling them to do, they're willing to do it. So it's the ones who are not licensed or the ones who are not following the rules that we've got to get on top of. And I think this is going to be one of our major points, and I would completely support additional support for Mr. Harris in code enforcement and also in police services, and making sure that any of the violations that are occurring are actually addressed. That's why this was, this, why this went forward. So that's my reading of the subject.
Did you have comments, Mr. Schoffler? Mr. Vixor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start by saying that we've had a lot of ordinances come in front of us, and I've oftentimes wondered, why do we have two readings of an ordinance? You know, why don't we just pass an ordinance the first time and it stands? But I think this is a really good example why we should have two readings of an ordinance, because we had the first reading, and it really brought the issue to the attention of the public, which allowed us to get some feedback from the public before we have the second reading and determine whether we are going to actually adopt the ordinance or not. So after the first reading and starting to get feedback from the community, what I had to do was really take a look at, you know, is this a good idea? Where do, is having short-term rentals the right thing for this community? Now, I looked at the history, of course. This has been going on for a while, as, as, has been talked about. And ultimately, the ordinance, I believe, was a, a reasonable compromise that was come up with, and it was voted on, I believe it was twenty fourteen, was when it was originally passed. So this issue really was decided, except for the fact that the Coastal Commission had to, had to review it and either give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And two years later, which unfortunately takes the Coastal Commission quite some time to review things, this is a perfect example, two years later, they come back with some suggested changes. So now we have to look at, we basically have to revisit the issue again as to whether the community wants short-term rentals or not. And has been, as has been alluded to, community attitudes can change, and they can change rather rapidly, I think, as we saw in, in the last two years. And so what the council has to be aware of is that the community can change its values. So even though this has been debated and lots of work has gone into it over the years, we, we have to take that into account, but we also have to realize that we are here tonight to vote on this. So I really had to think about this, and when I started looking deeper into the issue of short-term rentals, you know, I, I had to weigh the pros and the cons. And, you know, I'll start off by saying, at first I thought, yes, we should allow them. You know, I'm, I'm a conservative person. I'm, I'm about private property rights, and if somebody owns their home, they ought to be able to rent it. Parts of, part of my questions had to do with the definition of short-term or long-term rentals, and we're not talking about disallowing people from renting their homes for long-term rentals. We're really talking about this one narrow aspect of it. We're really talking about this one narrow aspect of it, and should you be able to do what you want with your own property? So that was one thing that occurred to me. You know, also, this is a new economy. I mean, let's face it. We have Uber, Lyft, it's a sharing economy, and that's what these are. And people go on Airbnb, and they, they look for short-term rentals. And it does allow our, our residents to basically rent their homes and make some extra income in a bad economy. So I think that's good for those residents, and it also brings visitors to town, which I believe is good for our local businesses, because they go out and spend money on the local businesses. Also has been talked about, if we do allow it and regulate it, then we do collect the TOT. So the city actually increases its revenue. Again, another good thing, and then you also heard the question about enforcement, and the answer was, it's easier to enforce if we regulate it. Now, that, that was all in favor of allowing the ordinance. But once we started hearing the feedback from the community, and we do need to be able to respond to the feedback from the community, and what we're hearing is, there are issues with the noise, the parking, you know, the, the trash, the late nights, perhaps the language that's used. There are some issues, and we, as a city council, I believe, have to take into account, you know, our residents' quality of life, and that these are in residential neighborhoods. So suddenly, it wasn't such an easy call, once I started having to balance those, those things out. And, and I started thinking about the enforcement argument, and I wasn't really that persuaded by it. It's easier to enforce it if we regulate it, but I don't like the argument that just because it's difficult to enforce, that we're not going to do it. We hear that argument in other, in other issues. I don't want to open up a can of worms, but, you know, I've heard about people who want to legalize marijuana make the same argument. Hey, people are going to do it anyway. Why don't we, why don't we legalize it and tax it? Now, I don't think that that's, I don't think that's the right thing to do, so I'm not really that persuaded by that argument when it comes to this. So I lay that all out to say that suddenly, this became a very close call. And when you start thinking about, you know, balancing the needs of the community as a city councilman, you have to think about the compromises. Now, this ordinance, I think, was the result. It was a compromise, and we ended up allowing it, regulating it, devolving some of the authority to the, to the homeowners associations. All those seem like good compromises. But I was still sort of at a 50/50 on this. And there's a reason I can't vote for this tonight. And really, what it came down to was the issue of the sovereignty of the city. And we addressed that with, right now, if we don't have this ordinance, it's not allowed. But once we allow it, we've opened the door to the Coastal Commission, which is a state agency coming in and telling us, we can't ever get rid of these. Basically, that, that to me is a problem, because we are tying the hands of future city councils, perhaps even this city council. If we're listening, if we truly listen to the concerns of our residents, and if things change rapidly, we're still in an early stage with this ordinance, and we're seeing if it works. Now, the testimony we've heard is that, that it does work, and it is working. But it's still early, and we don't necessarily know that for sure, that ultimately, the community is not going to want short-term rentals banned completely. So that really took the scale for me, in the sense that, once we cede this authority to the Coastal Commission, to this state agency, our local government, our city, is not going to have a say and be able to be responsive to the citizens if, in fact, that is something that they want. So I wanted to explain my vote, and hopefully, it's clear, but I can't support this as it is tonight. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Shoful.
Yeah, I'll be brief. We currently have an enforceable ordinance that was designed over a long period of time to address a manifest tangible problem that was discussed by the testimony of many, many, many citizens over many, many years in this council chamber, right here in, in front of the Planning Commission, as well as the, as well as the city council. It wasn't a theoretical problem, it was an actual problem. The ordinance was crafted to give the city and many of the residents of the city, through their private restriction authority, the ability to competently deal with what was perceived to be and what was experienced to be a very severe problem at the time. We're on the, we're on the edge of certifying that law that has served the city very, very well for its entire record of application. And I can certainly understand that laws need to change over time to reflect the community's experience over time, their actual experience, not their theoretical experience. So for that reason, as Councilman Oviedo mentioned earlier, there are ways to, for this or future city councils, to change the ordinance and then go through the LCPA process with the Coastal Commission, exactly the way that we've done with this particular ordinance to give us the regulatory relief that the citizens of this city have been able to enjoy. And I can tell you, I don't, I don't know how many are in this room tonight who attended all or many of those hearings, but many of those folks are not represented here this evening. So what I would be prepared to propose at this time, because it's pretty hard to take a problem that we have, that we have an effective regulatory solution to, and risk that. And as one speaker said, well, you don't know that that's actually going to happen, and you don't know that the Coastal Commission's not going to play ball with you, and you don't know that they're, and you're right, I don't. I can't predict that with utter clarity. But my experience, my practice for many, many, many years informs me otherwise. So what I would propose is that we, since the deadline is until October 14th, that we notice this, we come back one more time, we hear from as many people in the community as are willing to testify on this topic, testify to their experience over the past decade, from, from every angle of this problem, so that we can make the best-informed community decision reflecting the will of the community at that time. We're not prejudiced, since we have the October 14th deadline. We can then consider many, if not all, of the points raised by Betty in her letter, many of which are great points, and many of which I would support in a later amendment to the, to the ordinance. What I don't want to do is throw the baby out with the bathwater, throw out a ordinance that has actually conferred the relief that people were talking about that they needed so badly from the externalities that are imposed upon neighborhoods by folks who operate short-term rentals, either permitted or unpermitted, in a way that's injurious to the neighborhood. So, Mr. Mayor, for discussion, I would say that we move this to our next, next scheduled meeting of September 21st, to allow all of the interested stakeholders to fill this chamber and let us have a, perhaps a wider and a more accurate view as to where we are in terms of the will of the community at that time. Because I'm not sure we're ready to throw away or risk throwing away this ordinance. And there might be a better way to shape whatever communication we have going back from the city to the Coastal Commission to lessen the risk of throwing it away. What I would hate to do is reject it outright this evening and close that door entirely. So that would, that would be my motion, and perhaps there'll be a second.
I think Mr. Shawkaby says a comment.
Just to clarify, if I look at my calendar, I see the, the meeting would be Tuesday, September 20th, correct? 20th, as opposed to the 21st. And I think that will allow people to get back from holiday, as opposed to having it the day after Labor Day or in August, and give adequate notice to everybody. But I just want to make sure we're clear at the 20th, as opposed to the 21st.
Okay, before, before there's a second, I'd like to make my comments. You know, I think the testimony by Mr. Harris tonight was illustrative of the type of ordinance that we could have if it's perfected. I know that no ordinance is perfect ever, but, you know, the fact that we've had very little enforcement actions and a fairly successful program speaks volumes to me. But I'm also interested in hearing what the community has to say. You know, I agree with Mr. Shoful. I don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, because there needs to be a little bit more discussion on this topic. So I'll second your motion, Mr. Shoful. Any further discussion?
I want to thank you, Mr. Shoful. That's kind of where I was heading with this. You know, there are other portions of this ordinance that allow us to go to Coastal, and we, there's some de minimis changes we can make that wouldn't take a long time. My concern is, if we have a change, it's going to take two years, like, like it did on this one, to get a response, and that's an awful long time for our residents to wait for a response from Coastal. So I just want to say thank you, because I think it is a good ordinance right now. But, you know, along with Mr. Vixor, I do have the concerns that we've lost some of our sovereignty by turning these, these controls over to a state agency. So I'm going to support your motion, and thank you for making it.
I would like some further clarification. If we do have the opportunity to go back to Coastal with some minor tweaks, possibly, I'd like to get more information on how that process would evolve and how that goes about. Is it just a complete rejection, which we seem to hear is a possibility tonight? If we don't accept their amendments, their changes, then is that a rejection of their amendments? So I'd like to get more information, clarify that for our next meeting, please. Okay. Mr. Vixor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to support this motion. I don't think it addresses the issue of the sovereignty question. Whether we hear more from the, the community, and they overwhelmingly say they don't want short-term rentals, or they come in and they say they do want short-term rentals, that doesn't really address the question that concerns me with this. I think the, the best way to proceed is to go as quickly as possible. If we were not to approve this tonight, I believe it would go back at that point. If we wanted to make changes to it, that's all part of the negotiation with the Coastal Commission. I feel we're just delaying this and kicking the can down the road a little bit, and when it's a decision we could make tonight, right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. saying no. Madam Clerk, how many public comments do we have this evening? Yes. Six. Do we need to take a break at this point for a five-minute recess? No? Okay. Then, let's power through it, then. Public comments. So we don't have any ordinances to read or approve this evening? Madam Clerk, do we? I don't think so. Two titles, okay. But that's, that's been postponed. Okay, public comments. There will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for this public comments portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. The clerk will distribute any handouts you may have. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Okay, first speaker is Bob Becker, filed, followed by Carl Kuhn and Joseph R. Medrow, I believe?
Madero.
Madero. Thank you, Mr. Madero. Mr. Becker, please.
Place is falling apart here. There we go. Well, on a positive note, my name is Bob Becker. I'm a resident of Dana Point, and I volunteer with the Pet Project Foundation at the San Clemente, yeah, Dana Point Animal Shelter. This coming Saturday, the 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., San Clemente Dana Point Animal Shelter will be participating in NBC's Clear the Shelters campaign. All dogs, cats, rabbits will be available for adoption for $20. This is a saving of up to $130 off regular adoption fees. All of our animals have been spayed or neutered, and as an example of what else you get for $20, our cats and kittens have been seen by a veterinarian, tested for feline diseases, been treated for fleas and worms, given applicable shots, microchipped, and socialized by adoring volunteers. Many local veterinarians also provide a free health check after your adoption. We adopted out a record number of pet, our pets last year to living homes for a one-day adoption event and hope to break that record this year. This campaign brings to light the many animals who need homes and is taking place all across the country. Pet Project Foundation, in partnership with the shelter, is proud to be a participant in this amazing rescue effort. We have many terrific cats and especially kittens at this kitten season this time of year, and your best friend is waiting for you at our city's shelter. Shelter is located in San Clemente, at 221 Avenue de Fabricante, and can be reached at (949) 492-1617. Further information also available on the website, www.petprojectfoundation.org. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Carl Kuhn, please. Take your time, sir.
Maybe you could lift me up. That's a little bit harder for me, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Carl Kuhn. I live in Niguel Shores in Dana Point. I'm also the manager or the editor of our community newsletter. And thanks to an email reminder from Director Brad Fowler, he gave me information on the trolley startup. So I put an article in our community newsletter reminding our homeowners what a great opportunity that is for them to have their visitors see our beautiful city in the trolley. Taking my own advice, since I had not been on the trolley, and I recently, two weeks ago, had friends from Cleveland, we went on the trolley. And I'm here to tell you, that was a great experience. First of all, for me, it was very simple to use the lift. The drivers were courteous. They locked me in, and we went on our way. Part of that trip, the trolley was full, and there was standing room. And there was, there were seats where I had to have them removed to allow me to be on that trolley. My friends from Cleveland were very thankful for that opportunity. I think now they wish they may have, they wish they might have been here this week instead of back in Cleveland this week. So I'm here just to thank our city for providing that trolley service, because I think it's a very great benefit for the city. Thank you.
Mayor Thompson, if I could just add, I want to thank Mr. Kuhn for coming forward. I really appreciate that. Having run a fixed route transit system in my last city, I wish, I'm just so happy, and I want to thank the staff for making sure that we are completely and totally accessible, because I know the council wouldn't have it any other way. So thank you very much, sir, for your kind words. I appreciate that.
Well, you need kind words. Well, you need kind words every now and then, I hear.
Madero.
Madero.
My name is Joe Madero and I'm a Dana Point resident, and I just wanted to briefly redraw the attention of the council to the situation of parking in the Lantern District. A good number of us testified about a year ago about various proposals and the outcomes for parking in the Lantern District. At that time, I talked about the overflow problem, and I think Mr. Mueller, Councilman Mueller, am I pronouncing it right, said it correctly. If you're going to be successful, then you're going to have some traffic problems, and we have been successful. And on Del Abyspo, we have, the restaurants are picking up a lot of business, summer's coming, and we have two brand-new restaurants which are adding to things, and so that's good stuff. I happen to live at the very end of Amber Lantern, so I think I live in the most beautiful spot in the world. I was with UPS for 35 years, so we have 220 countries and I can't find anything more beautiful than the end of that street. Unfortunately, I share that with hundreds of people every day that go down there. And I wanted to, I was able to give Kevin Evans, before he left, a thank you for the beautiful job they did at the end of those things. They call them Vista Points at the end of Amber Lantern and Violet Lantern, the others. The pergolas were redone, and it's beautiful and it attracts people there. The counterintuitive thing is that because of the success, the problem that we had is even growing. And I can understand this. The restaurants and the businesses are telling their employees to park on those residential streets, the Lantern Streets, and we see them park every day, and it's crowded and it's impairing the ability of those people that want to come and enjoy that Vista Point and the bluff walk and those kinds of things. It's to the point now where the ages bus from the senior center can't find a place to park and drop them off. So, I would say that this council, there's a sense of urgency to address this. I know it's difficult and you have to balance things. I saw some stickers recently and I found that there were, the council is doing some things north of the town center with the preferred parking districts, which I understand aren't addressing those issues, but nothing so far has been done in the Lantern District. And I understand the complication by the Coastal Zoning Commission. So, I'm here to ask that something get off the ground in the Lantern District. We have two streets, Amber Lantern and Violet Lantern, where we have unanimity. We've actually had a petition, I know, on Amber Lantern where it's 100% of the residents that want to have, I think I'm saying it right, a, not a preferred district, but a parking benefit district. Thanks so much. And we would like to start off with that because it's coming to the point where we've created a beautiful place that's inviting for so many people, residents and visitors, and those residents on those streets, although there may be some concerns on other areas, are ready to go. We've signed petitions, sent it in, and we think it's vital that we address this issue. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, George Luhann, Sandy Iverson, followed by Lynn Smith.
Good evening, council. Thank you. My comments will be brief. George Luhann, I as well live on Amber Lantern, and I'm going to reiterate what Joe has just mentioned with the request for a parking district. Purpose tonight's request is the city council, please create a parking benefit district for the Street of Amber Lantern between Santa Clara and the cul-de-sac. I believe a preferential parking district was approved and implemented, or in the process of being implemented, for the inland side of the Lantern District. It should be noted that at this point, and it's been, I believe, clearly noted, that not all of the Oceanside property owners of the Lantern District are in approval of creating a parking benefit district. Not the case with Amber Lantern. We, as residents, have gone through, we have 100% of the signatures through a petition requesting this in this action from this council. So, I ask, please listen to them with understanding and follow through. Please help the residents stop the commercial overflow, the overnight parking, and this is the stress, the key, is the late-night illegal activities that happen on that cul-de-sac. As Joe mentioned, it's been beautifully remodeled. Thank you to the city and the council for that, but with that, it has drawn countless incursions at night, parking and all types of issues there, and we're hoping this might be one way to stem this. So, in conclusion, we ask the staff to approve and move ahead with the request to protect the residents of Amber Lantern between Santa Clara and the cul-de-sac in requesting the parking benefit district be created. Thank you.
Comments, Mr. Luhann? Sandy Iverson, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Sandy Iverson, Capistrano Beach. I don't know how many of you have recently been able to access and take a look at the current Rain Tree construction documents or their plans. We were given access to that after we put in a request to do so. Kathy Ward had to sit with us the entire time, made sure we didn't take any photos or do anything nefarious with it. So, but what they revealed, that on Election Day, the city granted Rain Tree permission to build two levels of subterranean parking under Amber Lantern Street. Prior to that, the planning commission had approved two separate buildings facing each other on Amber Lantern with their own parking lots. But suddenly, what appeared is this new parking structure under Amber Lantern for two floors. The head of community development has the authority to grant changes to the building plans that were previously entitled to Majestic Development, but why she considered excavating under Amber Lantern for a parking garage, a change not needing consideration by the planning commission or disclosure to the public is an outrage. This new approved plan combines two parking structures under Rain Tree's buildings on either side of Amber Lantern into one large structure. The advantage of this approach is that it produces 46 more parking spaces, including residential guest spaces, and reduces the discounted in-lu parking spaces that, from the project from 2006 to 16. The disadvantage is that it involves the closure of Amber Lantern for an extended period of time and opens up the question of liability to the city should problems develop in the future and represents a huge giveaway to this developer, allowing them to get away with paying less for in-lu fees, which could be used to finally build a parking structure in the future, which we already know is needed right now. Rain Tree and Majestic each contributed $10,000 in support to the city's Measure I. Rain Tree received permits for the Amber Lantern, Violet Lantern parking structures and building foundations on June 7th, Election Day. Imagine that. Parking structure under Amber Lantern adds parking spaces, but is a huge giveaway, and what kind of precedence does this start? The rooftop decks and rooftop elevators have been eliminated, which was great, which is something Measure H was asking for, but we also, our master plan from 2008 specifically called for three stories, 40 feet, not four stories, 40 feet, which is what Rain Tree's giving us. Due to the contentious nature of this project, all changes to the Majestic entitlement should be presented to the planning commission for approval and allow the public to be informed. Enforcing Measure H, not circumventing it, should be the city's primary obligation. It is up to our city council to see that the city follows voters' mandate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lynn Smith, please.
I can't help but make the comment that the plot thickens. Sorry. Kind of a joke. However, what I wanted to say was, as an artist and instructor, the finished product of the streets going both ways, I thought came out really great. From the design to the details, the hardscape, the landscape, all the small details that maybe unless you were an artist and picked them out, like the finish of the bike rack or the way they did the fencing with the cable, all the little setbacks and things all came together in my artist's mind when I drive down, especially the southbound, it really feels good. So, I just wanted to talk about that, and I just think it's wonderful. The traffic goes a little too fast for my liking on the other side, the coast highway, but in general, I thought it was so inviting and I thought the design, I don't know who the design team was, but it's fabulous. The other thing, parking in San Clemente on Del Mar, I'm making a kind of a reference to Capo Beach, but the parking goes diagonally, which is more friendly, and as restaurants have grown on Del Mar, I give up when I want to go someplace because I can't park. So, the progressive, the buzzwords like progressive, you got to get progressive and maybe put in, not have as much parking as you need, kind of concerns me when developing like Capo Beach or something, that maybe some of those buzzwords should take over, you know, everybody putting in their thoughts together instead of, you know, being railroaded in, yeah, progressive and let's just do it, there's not enough parking, and that's okay. So, it just, it also depends, like Mr. Mueller said, on what, how we want to establish it and what we want it to be, and it would seem to be more like San Clemente or how we've created the now new downtown. It's more user-friendly and it feels good, and it feels like a community, and it feels like a neighborhood, and it feels like a family. So, that's what I wanted to say about that. I don't know, I can't make a comment on number 18, can I?
Go ahead, it's public comments, please.
The only thing I wanted to add was, I appreciate the work that gentleman does on enforcing, but it didn't feel very good when he talked about short-term rentals and how those people are fixing up their property. When somebody that maybe owns the property doesn't put all the money into it, that was offensive to me. And I don't think that was a comment that that person should have made because it's a resident and it's a family, and we all take care of our houses because we're proud of our neighborhood and we protect our investment for money-wise and for, and so I don't think he should have been commenting on, you know, somebody's going to take care of their property of their vacation rental person. And, you know, that was just, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Moving on to the next item, it's public hearings. We have one item. Mr. Schalkavies, a staff report?
Yes. Is the date and time noticed for the last action and a series of three actions associated with weed abatement? Before you tonight is the third and final resolution that confirms the costs associated with the weed abatement program and authorization to allow us to lien the properties to collect the monies. With that, we would recommend you receive any public testimony. Ursula and I would be happy to respond to any questions, as would Mr. Sutton.
Any questions from council? No? We have one public comment, it looks like. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Nadia Starnar. Hmm. Okay, well, seeing that she's not here, we'll close the public comment section of this public hearing. I'll move it back to the council for comments.
Move the recommended item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. I don't see any unfinished business at this point. Is there any? Anybody? No new business? I don't see any new business as well. Let's go on to staff reports. Mr. Schalkavies.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I want to thank Mr. Becker for his comment about the Clear the Shelter program this weekend, and I think what's topical of that is, as everyone knows, animal shelters are something that can be contentious issues in a community, and I know we've had our days in the past, but I just wanted to thank Kim Cholodenko for the job she does, and I think Mr. Schoffel can attest to the fact that in 15 years I've been here, the shelter's never been run better, and there's harmony between the two cities and the volunteer group, and so I just, I wanted to point that out because I see the discussions going on in other cities, and being an animal lover myself, I really feel good that we have something that's working here and serves the community, but also the animal population. And again, thanks to Mr. Kuhn for his kind remarks because having run a fixed route system, ADA issues are something that are near and dear to my heart, and Brad and the team have done everything possible to ensure accessibility for all, and I can't tell you how good I feel about that, and I know the council wouldn't have it any other way. So, again, thank you very much, Brad and the team, for what you do, and that's all I've got to say this evening.
Okay. Mr. Munoz.
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to council reports. Mr. Olivera.
Thank you for this, for Madam Clerk. I have no meetings to report, so that's my report.
Mr. Schoffel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just wanted to briefly say, yes, thanks to our general manager up at the shelter. We can be very proud of the humane care that's given to the animals up there. The staff works very closely together. The harmony is really terrific, and the cooperation, the joint powers agency with San Clemente is great as well. But I wanted to mention one other thing, just in case anybody out there is unfortunate enough to experience this. In the last, I'd say in the last two months, I've been personally contacted about three different animal trespass incidents, incidents, and when those things happen, people are very upset. There's sometimes injuries involved, things like that, certainly a lot of stress, a lot of fear and everything. And I have to say, I've never seen incidents like that handled with such professionalism and satisfaction to the people involved as our folks up at CASA. They get on it right away, and I usually get the first call, so I get the, you know, the tip of the stress and the screaming and this, that, and the other thing, and it's very understandable. People are upset under the circumstances, but we have a really well-trained group of animal control officers from the head down, the general manager down, so kudos to them. The other thing I wanted to mention is our summer concert season is in full swing now. The last two weeks at Sea Terrace Park, thanks to the community and Recreation Services Department, our nonprofits, everybody involved. I wanted to tell my colleagues on the council that I get approached by literally hundreds of people out there that say, be sure you thank the city council for putting on events like this that are so beneficial to our residents and our neighbors. So, I'd like to say that tonight, and it's off to a rockin' start, literally off to a rockin' start, and we're looking forward to a great summer there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Schoffel. Mr. Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report tonight, and I will get my list of meetings to the clerk. Thanks.
Mayor Protam, Vixor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Well, that leaves me to report. I'll get my list of meetings to the city clerk as soon as possible. I did want to comment about the trolley, though. I've had a couple of opportunities to ride it, and I rode it last weekend and Saturday, and there was 30-plus people on that trolley, and it's a very happy place. The drivers play some pretty good music, and I think a Beatles song came on, Yellow Submarine. I think just about everybody to a person was singing Yellow Submarine on that trolley ride, and there was such an overflow that we stopped at one stop, and there was five people waiting that didn't get on, but what a great experience if you hadn't had a chance to do it. It's tremendously, it looks to me, it's like tremendously successful. The new open-air feel to it is great to let the wind blow through your hair when you're riding downtown, and what a fabulous thing we have here. So, I hope this continues to be successful, and what a great addition to our community. And if you want to get happy, get on the Dana Point trolley. I might suggest maybe we do some of this before we do city council meetings, get to ride the trolley up here, but anyways, that concludes my report, and I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you for your attendance and your comments tonight.